Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Great. Well, welcome everyone. We're here for January 24th, 2023. Portola Valley Planning Commission, a special meeting. We don't usually have our meetings on Tuesdays. So, welcome everyone. And I'm very pleased to welcome to new commissioners to our meeting tonight. Linda Brothers, who was on Zoom and Ronnie Krishinsky, who is on there in person at the schoolhouse. So a very big welcome to them. Let's see, and we're gonna run this meeting, sort of the normal way. We'll have public comments on topics that are not on the agenda, which the agenda is for us to review the environmental information that refer or relates to the housing element. And then, of course, some minutes later. I just wanted to talk about one of our new commissioners, Ronnie Krishinsky, has a conflict. So we're going to run the meeting kind of in a certain way. He has a house at 275 Willowbrook Drive, which is adjacent to the Sequoias. And the Sequoias is one of our properties that has affiliated housing on it. So we've gotten advice from the Regulatory Committee that reviews ethics issues, the FPPC. And Ronnie is allowed or recommended that he can participate in the housing element. If we segment the discussion, so we're gonna do that tonight. We'll eventually, when we get to that, the main topic, we'll have a staff presentation. Then, as usual, questions from the commissioners on any topic except if it relates to the Sequoias. Then we'll take public comments. Then Commissioner Krishinsky will leave the chambers and we can ask questions or make comments on the anything that relates to the Sequoias. And then Commissioner Krishinsky will come back. And then comments about all the topics after that. Um, let me, I should have started. We usually start with roll call. Sorry. I kind of jumped the gun there. Sorry, Laura.
No problem. Thank you. Commissioner Targ?
Present.
Commissioner Brothers?
Present.
Commissioner Krishinsky?
Present.
Vice Chair Goulden?
Here.
Chair Koffsel?
Here.
Great. So we'll start the meeting with oral communication. And I think most everybody knows this is a chance for the public and residents to address the Planning Commission on any subject that is not on the agenda. You know, if it's about the, one of the agenda topics, we'd like you to wait so that it's contained with that topic. If and when people review the Zoom recording. If you bring up a topic in oral, this oral communications, we cannot take action on it because it's not agendized and other people don't know about it. But we're happy to hear from residents. And we, for all the sections, we ask people to limit their comments to three minutes. So we'll keep that as the practice. So I'm looking at both Zoom and I'll need help for people in the room, but we'll first take a comment from Bob Adams on Zoom. Bob, are you able to unmute?
Am I there now? Have you got it?
I hear you now.
Can you, you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yes, I'm in a noisy place. My apologies for that. And I'm got the timeframe this evening, but I want to make sure to thank the staff for all the work they've done on all this. We've done the negative declaration on all the sequel work. My hope is that tonight you guys can get an approval for this so we can commit to put the housing element in as soon as possible as far as submission to HCD. And I don't have any further comments.
Great. Thank you. Next, I see Rita Gomez on Zoom.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. First, I want to welcome the two new commissioners that you have. You know, and I hope everyone's had a time to have a mixer or whatever, so you guys can get to know each other. But I guess that's a little hard when you get together as a quorum. So hopefully you have opportunities so that you can work together, you know, closely for the residents. I received a very nice postcard from the, you know, city of Menlo Park today about their housing element meetings and how it was going to be going to the town council, the city council on January 31st. You know, I hope that when we go to a vote and send our stuff on to the city council, our town council, that I then receive something like that from our town and make an effort in Almanack and advertise it to the residents because it was, a lot of residents were unaware of this particular meeting. And, and then tomorrow's meeting that backs it, especially since we are limiting the places, the locations where we're notifying people no longer in the four locations and only in front of the, the town hall or the, you know, the building and online, which of course with our electrical issues that we have in our lovely town, sometimes it's not as dependable as it could be. And thank you Chair, Chairwoman on mentioning about the recusals for one of our new commissioners and how you're going to segment out that section. I also brings up that you yourself refuse on the wedge and that has not been brought up. Perhaps the council, you know, the town council can, can talk about that. The attorney, town attorney council can talk about that, but how is that going to be segmented? It hasn't been mentioned tonight, but, or in previous meetings. So hopefully that can be addressed in some way. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Rita. I see no more comments on Zoom. I need help from those of you in the room. Maybe Laura can help me. Are there any people present in the schoolhouse that would like to speak?
We have two members of public present in the schoolhouse and neither of them are indicating that they'd like to speak.
Okay. All right, then I'll close the section of oral communications. Um, you know, we've talked a few times about my and actually Nicholas Targ, both of us are recused when we talk about the wedge. But we've already said a few times, but I guess I can say it again, that on the housing element, the pipeline projects are just automatically included, of which the wedge is one. So there's not really discussion about whether to include those or not in the housing element. So therefore it does not cause a recusal in the housing element discussion. Did I say that about right, Cara?
Yes, that's, that's correct. The way we've analyzed that particular conflict issue is that because the Stanford project is really just listed there as a pipeline project, as you, as you said, Benham Chair, that there is not any discretion as to whether to include it in the housing element or not. And so therefore, we do not believe it raises conflict issues. As to the environmental issues, that the issue of the wedge has come up in some of the comments and we will get into this in more detail. But because this is a plan level EIR, it is not specifically analyzing the footprint impacts of the wedge project. Those are analyzed in a separate environmental document, which the two of you will be recused unless your, your conflict is resolved by the time we consider that project.
Thanks Cara. Great. So I think we're ready to move to our first agenda item and it's our main agenda item. Both the housing element update and on the mitigated negative declaration from the environmental review. Shall I turn it over to you Laura for a staff report and explanation?
Yes, thank you. Let me share my screen. Okay, hopefully everybody can see that now. Okay, so we are this evening talking about the Housing and Safety Element Update, Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration and its response to comments. So first I want to go over who is present here this evening from our technical team. So we have a big team this evening to be able to answer questions from the Planning Commission and from the public through the Planning Commission. So if you don't know me, I'm Laura Russell. I'm the Planning and Building Director. I am joined by Cara Silver, the Town Attorney. We also have John Wallace, the Town Geologist. So the three of us, many of you have seen at many different meetings in the past. Then we have Rick Jarvis from Jarvis Fay LLP. He is outside CEQA Council and it comes to us with very extensive CEQA knowledge. He's one of the leading CEQA practitioners in California. Then from our consultant team being led by Urban Planning Partners, we have Curtis Banks, who's the Project Director. You've met him and some of his team members through the course of this process. Then we also have a number of specialty consultants. Some of them have been before the Planning Commission before and others not. So we have our transportation consultants that worked specifically on the evacuation portion. We have our transportation consultants from, again, from Farr and Peers that worked on the VMT analysis. We have our team from Atlas Planning Solutions, who is booked into another meeting tonight, but he's going to join us for the maximum that he can doing a number of these different types of projects. Then we have Jim Martin, who's from Environmental Collaborative. They did the biology work for this project. And then we have Sem Adabek from Baseline Environmental Consultant. And those, that firm did a number of the different studies and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. So when we get to questions, we encourage the Planning Commission, this is a great time to ask questions of this technical team. We don't often have them all assembled together like this. So the meeting format is going to be our typical Planning Commission meeting format. This staff presentation, followed by Planning Commission questions for staff and the technical consultants. And then we'll receive public comments as we have been doing for the last meeting or two. If the public asks questions, then we'll keep track of those and we would ask the Planning Commissioners to indicate which public questions they would like us to answer. So we are not going to attempt to answer every single question from members of the public tonight, but ask the Planning Commissioners to help filter those and let us know what you'd like to hear answers to. And then in terms of the meeting intent, we have an update for you related to the housing element timing. And we have two new public information items that we wanted to share with the Commission and members of the public. Then we would like to receive public comments again on the initial study and mitigated negative declaration called the ISMND and its response to comments. The new piece is the response to comments. As you all know, the ISMND has been out and circulated for a while. We're looking specifically for comments that are related to the evaluations, the conclusions and/or the mitigation measures that are addressed in that document. And then how the response to comments addresses any additional questions or provides additional clarity on those items. Again, we want to answer questions from the Planning Commission. Now is the time with this full group of consultants together here tonight. We want to emphasize that the Planning Commission will take no formal action or make any final decisions at this meeting. That will happen at an upcoming meeting. And we don't anticipate that the Planning Commission will discuss the specific merits of the housing element itself or any of the zoning code amendments. So this is really related to the ISMND and the response to comments. So I wanted to give everyone an update on the housing element timing. So as I think many or all of you know, the town has been working intensively for approximately 17 months per the council direction in an attempt to adopt the housing element by January 31st of this year, so the end of this month. There was always an acknowledgement that it'd be very challenging to do so, but the council directed us to do the best that we could to meet that requirement. At recent meetings of the Planning Commission and the council, we've received additional questions and additional concerns. So staff has been conducting direct outreach with property owners and with concerned neighbors and others to try to address those things. We've also had members of the community as well as commissioners have asked for additional participation by the Woodside Fire Protection District. So people wanted the fire marshal to be more involved in these meetings that are leading up to approval of the housing element. So I've been in direct communication with the fire marshal and he has agreed to attend one or more of the upcoming meetings. So we'll let you know and place on the agenda and an opportunity to speak to the Planning Commission. So we staff have been making progress towards those items that required additional time. But we have found that it is no longer possible to adopt the housing element by January 31st. So the town council is aware of that fact. And tomorrow on the 25th, there'll be a town council consideration of whether to wait to implement the zoning code amendments. So I just want to elaborate a little bit on this, since it's such an important part of the Planning Commission's work. Up till now, there's been an interest to do the zoning code amendments at the same time as the housing element itself. And then bring that forward for adoption with the environmental document. As time has gone on and some of the towns' interests have changed and evolved, we are suggesting to the town council that they may want to consider having the housing element adopted as soon as possible and to take a little bit more time on the zoning code amendments. So we provided that information to the council in the staff report. So if you're interested, you can take a look at that report, which is available online. And if you want to participate in that meeting, everyone is encouraged to attend the council meeting tomorrow night to be able to hear about that item. In addition, at the meeting tomorrow night, we expect there to be discussion on a colleagues memo from two members of the town council related to the housing element and future steps that may happen in relationship to it. So those two items may be of particular interest to those of you that are tracking the housing element process overall. We've also put out two new pieces of material for members of the public to keep up to speed on the process that we've been working through. There is a process frequently asked questions about the steps that we're going through. So that's a couple pages long. It's posted on the website and linked to the staff report for tonight's meeting. And then we have also developed a table of all of the meetings and the key documents that have been related to the housing element update. So this is just a little excerpt of it here on the screen and it's included in the packet and also available online. So it includes all of the main meetings that the town has conducted so far on the housing element update. It includes some of the titles and the topics from each of those meetings, what was discussed and direct links to the key links. And then if it was part of a larger meeting, like a council meeting, there's a timestamp so that you know where to go to on the YouTube video. Or if it was the only item, such as the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee, you can see the length of the meeting. And we hope this will make it easier for people to see what was discussed at what time and at what meetings. And to more easily go back and be able to look at presentations or watch portions of those meeting videos. We wanted to point out that there's been 33 meetings so far and approximately 115 hours of public meetings on the housing element update. Our goal is to continue to update this table after each meeting, so it continues to be a living document and a resource for Planning Commissioners and members of the public and the council as we move towards adoption. So now we're going to start talking about our main topic this evening, and that's related to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. So the main purpose of CEQA is to inform government decision makers and the public about potential environmental effects of proposed activities and to prevent significant avoidable environmental damage. And so it's really important to point out the to inform part here. So many of you have heard this before. CEQA goes back to about 1970 when there was a number of different types of environmental regulations that went into place. Since that time, it has evolved a lot. I have seen the CEQA document from my dad's business from 1972 and it was three pages. And so now you have all seen the hundreds of pages that are part of a CEQA document in today's environment. And again, the key is to inform. It doesn't dictate any particular outcome. So it's not a recommendation to either approve or deny a project. That rests with the decision-making body based on other criteria, such as findings for approval for a project or other interests that a city or town may have. So this document, some kind of CEQA analysis is required for any kind of project that's seeking a discretionary approval. So anytime a decision-making body is using judgment and that's from a public agency and that's if it causes either direct physical change or a reasonably foreseeable indirect change in the environment. And these are important terms that come from CEQA law and practice. As we'll be discussing, there are many, many terms of art when it comes to CEQA. And some of them within a CEQA context don't have the same meaning as we might use those words in common usage. We also want to, through a CEQA process, identify ways to either avoid or mitigate impacts if it's feasible. So it's a big question. This is, this is how I actually look sometimes trying to figure out how to put these pieces together. The CEQA is guided by a number of different things because of the way it's evolved and because of the way that it's enforced. So we rely on the state law itself. And then there are CEQA guidelines that are published by the state. And then we have court decisions and case law that we refer to and the attorneys refer to. Then there are regulations and guidelines that are published by other state and regional agencies that we're required to comply with and consider. And then another part of CEQA practice is related to best practices. And so the professionals that practice this kind of analysis do it frequently and stay up to date with the best practices in their respective fields. So we're going to go over a few CEQA key concepts. Some of this is repeat for some of you, but some of it has been updated in light of the questions and comments that we received that we're trying to respond to in the response to comments. So appreciate your patience if this is old information for you. We just want to make sure everyone's at the same starting place. So what is a project in CEQA? So project is in quotations here because it means different things at different times, unfortunately. But generally speaking, what we're talking about here is a term of art and it applies to whatever discretionary action is being undertaken. So we oftentimes use the term project to talk about a specific development project. But under CEQA, project can also be a larger set of actions that are being taken concurrently or at the same time, such as a plan document. So in this case, the project includes all of the actions that are currently being considered by the town. And those are listed in the quote, "project description" in the ISMND. So those two terms, project and project description, have a specific meaning here. In this case, it includes the updates to the housing element and the safety element, those elements themselves, the conforming general plan amendments for consistency, as well as the zoning code amendments. So it is legally appropriate to use the term project when we're referring to all of those things together collectively that are being considered. It is permissible for those different pieces to be approved at different times as long as the environmental document, in this case, the ISMND, is approved first. So it is legally permissible for us to go forward in the housing element and the conforming general plan amendments, followed by zoning code amendments, for example, or followed by the safety element, for example, as long as the environmental document is completed. The project, in this sense, does not include the future approval of site-specific development projects or what is specifically proposed to be built in the future. Each current and future development project is responsible for its own CEQA analysis. So important example that people have asked about, the Stanford Wedge Housing Project. This ISMND does not facilitate or streamline that project. That project is dependent on its own separate environmental impact report. And then looking ahead to future projects, the scope of the CEQA analysis would vary based on the scope of that future project. A little bit more along these same lines, talking about what is a program or plan level analysis versus a project level analysis. So in this case, we're using that same word, project, but in a different way. We did not make this stuff up. This is just how CEQA is, unfortunately, and we have to deal with it. So what we're talking about here is a program or plan level CEQA analysis. It considers broad policies. It covers the whole plan. So it thinks of the housing element as a whole, along with the other things that the town is considering. It does not examine all the potential site-specific impacts of those individual projects because they're not known yet. We can contrast that to a project level analysis where there's a specific proposal for a development with all the plans and materials that go with it. And that includes the planning, construction and operation of that project. So an example of that would be the Stanford Wedge EIR that many of you are familiar with. So what happens with those future development projects that are proposed under the housing element? Each individual project will be evaluated through all the different steps and the appropriate CEQA review is determined based on what is proposed. So as many of you know, there are specific things that are exempt by state law from CEQA analysis. So if these projects come forward and they're found to be exempt under state law, then they would proceed without additional analysis. Or another example on the far other side would be the Ford Field and Open Space Affordable Housing Project that's in the housing element. That would require its own project level CEQA analysis, most likely an environmental impact report. So those are the two far ends of the spectrum that we may see as we go forward with implementation of these plans and materials. So a little bit more about a mitigated negative declaration versus an environmental impact report. The town is the lead agency under CEQA, another term of art. And we prepared the initial study with the technical team that we've been talking about to determine if a project may have, the project again, is this whole set of things we're looking at, if it may have a significant adverse effect. If there's no adverse effects or if it can be reduced to less than significant, then the mitigated negative declaration can be adopted. So that's the position that we're in right now. If mitigation measures don't reduce those impacts, then an EIR must be prepared. And again, we know that these terms don't make a lot of sense compared to common usage of the words. There's just so many terms of art and it is a real challenge in terms of implementing CEQA. So the environmental review process that we've been going through, we prepared the draft ISMND and did an internal review. Some of you have asked about this in the past. So we had a whole team of people reviewing that initial draft of the ISMND. That includes folks that you're familiar with, Howard Young, our Public Works Director, our engineering consultant, the fire district, many other parties within their specialties. And then we released And then we released the public version of that, that you have all seen. There was a 30-day public review period, end of October to end of November. And then, as we told you before, we were going to prepare the response to comments memo. And so that's what's before the Planning Commission tonight, and that covers the environmental issues under CEQA. Upcoming next steps would include a Planning Commission formal recommendation on the IS MND and the other associated actions. And of course, the Town Council is the final decision-maker. And I want to point out, make sure everyone understands, that the environmental review has to be completed and certified or adopted, whichever language may apply, before the housing element can be adopted. So people have asked me if we have to do this now, and the answer is it has to be completed in order for the town to adopt the housing element. So as a reminder, these are the topics that were evaluated in the IS MND. These are the standard topics that are evaluated under CEQA, and typically in this order with these letters. So if you review more CEQA documents, this becomes more familiar to you. I want to point out and recognize that there are other topics that may be of interest to the town, but are not necessarily covered under CEQA. And that can be a frustrating aspect of the CEQA process, is that you may be thinking, "Oh, but there's other things I can think of that aren't included in the document." And that's because we review these specific topics and specific questions that go with them when we're conducting a CEQA analysis. So this is a little bit of repeat, but just wanted to make sure people have a sense of how the consultants fit in with the different sections. So Urban Planning Partners is the lead, and then Farr and Peers does transportation and evacuation analysis. So that's Bob and Charlie that are here tonight. Baseline Environmental Consulting did air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, worked on geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality and noise analyses. Then Environmental Collaborative did biological resource analysis. We do not have this evening the cultural and tribal consultant, and we do not have the wildfire hazard consultant from Deer Creek Resources. But I wanted to repeat that we will have the Fire Marshal at one or more upcoming meetings. And then for legal review, we have the town attorney, of course, and then we have Rick Jarvis, as I mentioned, a preeminent CEQA attorney. So I also wanted to mention and make a connection to the town's existing policies. So as many of you know, the Town General Plan and other existing policies that we already have in place include strong environmental protections. And so when the CEQA topics were analyzed, we found that there were many policies already in place across the town regulations, as well as regional and state requirements. And so I think it's helpful to think of the word "self-mitigating." The housing element and the safety element are parts of the general plan, so they're parts of the whole. And that general plan already has many policies in place for environmental protections. So the plan, you can think of it as mitigates itself when you think about all the policies coming together. So an example that resonates with me is the town's established geotechnical mapping. So we have a very in-depth program for many decades and very detailed map, that maps and a review process that's already in place. If we didn't have that mapping and that process already in place, there would almost certainly be more mitigation required in the geologic and seismic categories. So this principle that we already have many environmental policies in place in town, that's part of the conclusion that there would not be a significant impact as defined in CEQA law. And I would point out that from a CEQA perspective, this is a relatively small number of housing units that's being analyzed through our RENA process. It's a big number to the town, but from a CEQA point of view, it's a relatively small number for a community that has so many strong environmental policies. And then in those, in our case, rare instances where existing policies do not exist, then mitigation measures were included. So the mitigation measures are within the body of the document, and then we've also included the mitigation measures as a separate table. So then, talking a little bit more about the response to comments. And so this is the main new work product that we wanted to share with the Planning Commission and the council. When you do an IS MND, you are not technically required to develop this really detailed response to all public comments. This kind of response to comments is typically associated with an environmental impact report, not with an MND. But we did prepare this really detailed document because of the very high level of interest and the importance of these topics to the town. So that's why we have this large document for everyone to review. The response to comments memo itself includes a number of different pieces. There's a short description of the CEQA process. There is a summary of the comment letters that were received, so those are all listed. And then, this is an important concept, the master responses. So if we received multiple comments on the same topic, then we replied in a master response and then referred back to them, so that we could cover it in more detail and make it easier for everybody to review. Then there are responses to specific comments on the environmental analysis, on the specific letters that we received. And if you're reviewing one of these for the first time, you look up into the, each letter in the upper right-hand corner has a code on it that refers to what letter it is, so we can keep track of all the numbering. And then in the right margin, all of the comments are numbered, so that you can follow and track all of the responses. Then towards the end, there's a few comment letters that are more related to the merits of the project, but not related to the CEQA topics. So we didn't respond to those, but those are included for a full record. And then there's a list of text revisions to the IS MND that's in response to comments or to provide more clarity to some of the things that came up. And we have already received a request for a table of contents to put on top of this response to comments, to make it easier for people to find everything. And so we will be preparing that table of contents as we move on to the next step. So a little bit more about the master responses. Again, this is where there was multiple comments on the same topic. And if you had any trouble finding anything, or members of the public that watched this later, this will help you to go back to find any of those pieces. So there's eight master responses. And number one is on the programmatic scope of the CEQA analysis. Number two is the aesthetic analysis. Three is evacuation and wildfire. Four, geologic hazards. Five is the fire maps, and that also refers back to a memo that the Planning Commission has seen previously within the fire maps. Six is parks and recreation. Seven is the safety element update, timing and the relationship there. And then eight is a cumulative analysis. So you will not be surprised when you look at this list that these were the areas that we received the highest kind of number of comments on, and there was a lot of overlap. So we do have a number of technical experts that can help with some of these topic areas this evening, if there are questions. And then I mentioned earlier that when there's mitigation measures, those are listed in the document, and they are also collected out into the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So that's called the MMRP, which is a common acronym in the CEQA world. And so this is just an example of one of those pages. This is attached to the staff report. This is a very standard format for how an MMRP is designed, including the mitigation measures, the action that has to be taken, the timing of when it needs to be taken, and who's responsible for completing it. Some MMRPs are very complex and have a number of different responsible agencies to implement those pieces. In this case, there's a relatively small number of mitigation measures, with the majority of the responsibility for monitoring them being with the town's planning and building department. So looking ahead to next steps, I mentioned already that tomorrow, there's a Town Council meeting, also at 7:00 PM, also hybrid. You can attend in person or via Zoom, related to the timing of the zoning code amendments and the colleagues' memo. Right now, we have a February 15 tentative Planning Commission meeting. Depending on the direction of the council tomorrow, we may have the opportunity or the challenge, depending on how you look at it, of reviewing the housing element and all of the associated actions at that February 15 meeting. So more information to come on that after we hear from council. And then it'll be to be determined when the Town Council will consider all of those materials. Also wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the safety element is on its own schedule right now. It is currently under review by the town's committees, and then the Planning Commission's schedule will be determined after that. So that concludes my presentation. I didn't want to go into too much detail on the technical analysis. I wanted to leave that to the Planning Commission to let us know what you'd like to hear in the form of questions from our technical group. And so with that, I'll conclude, and we can turn to questions.
All right, so we'll have questions from the commissioners. And I already, I talked to our two new commissioners, Kryjinski and Brothers, and probably everybody can appreciate, this is a tough set of topics to be a new commissioner on. If we could all design this, we'd pick some more light issue for everybody to start on. But we're under the gun to finish, or as soon as possible, the housing element. So we've got to push through difficult topics right away. They knew that before they got on it, but I'm going to call on Commissioners Targ and Goulden first, and then give our new commissioners just a few more minutes to think about anything they might want to ask. So Nicholas, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, so just, this is a point of clarification of what was just reviewed. It's the only question that I had going forwards of, about the CEQA process, was tribal consultation and whether that was needed for an amendment to the GP. Beyond that, there are items that, of course, were, the responses, they did have comments on and thoughts on, but those aren't in the nature of questions at the moment.
Curtis, if you could join me, I believe tribal consultation is required and was completed.
Both your comments are correct. We did conduct the tribal consultations.
Thanks, is that good, Nicholas?
Sounds good.
John, do you have any questions for staff right now?
Yes, I do. I've got two high-level questions, or they're kind of related to each other. The first one is, have we had any indication or comments by the state regarding the use of a MND for their, the state-required housing elements?
I'm not aware of any comment from the state about the use of an MND. We, there are different parts of the state that sometimes we're referring to. So specifically, HCD, which is Housing and Community Development, we would not expect to receive comments from them. But there are also state agencies that are regulatory, environmental regulatory agencies, and we always notify them that an MND is being paired, and they can provide comments if they wish. And we did not receive comments by any of those state agencies on the MND.
Okay, and maybe kind of on the flip side of that, it seems to me that some folks are thinking that CEQA might be, CEQA law might be used to somehow block or fight the state RENA requirements. And I was wondering if anything that's happened in Southern California gives us any indication that that could be a possibility.
I'll ask Cara to start with that, and then Rick maybe also can join us.
Thank you. So in Southern California, I'm not aware of any lawsuits that have come up as a result of, I guess, preparing either a CEQA exemption or a CEQA IS MND instead of an EIR. That being said, I think there are about 250 jurisdictions in Southern California, and I think last plant, you know, something like 60 of those agencies have actually completed their housing element in time. And so many of those agencies are still working on it. So we don't have a definitive answer yet for all Southern California agencies.
Cara, I'm having a little trouble hearing. Would you try speaking closer to the mic?
How is this, Anne?
That sounds better, thank you.
Okay. So just to repeat, I am not aware of any CEQA challenge to the IS MND or a CEQA exemption that was issued or approved by a Southern California agency in connection with the housing element. Rick, I'll ask you, have you heard of the challenge occurring this cycle?
I have not heard of that, no. And I think the time to make such a challenge would have run if, you know, somebody had wanted to do that, and if that was even possible. But I, no, the short answer is I don't see any basis for making a, mounting a CEQA challenge against the RENA determination made, in this case, by the Bay Area agency.
And also, just for context, I'll add that the last cycle that we prepared for the fifth element, fifth cycle, housing element, that the town at that time also did an IS MND.
Those are my questions, thank you.
If I may, was the question regarding whether there is a challenge to the RENA numbers themselves, or was the question pertaining to the use of an IS MND to cover the housing element? This has certainly been litigation challenging housing elements under CEQA, but I wasn't sure what, whether that was the issue, or whether the question was going to the RENA number itself.
So in my case, I didn't know enough to make that distinction. I was dealing with it generally, overall, and trying to figure out, you know, was there, was there anything behind this that we needed to understand? You know, that we could learn from what had happened in Southern California and how that would affect us moving forward, so.
So let me go and re-ask your question, say, for example, with the challenge to the LA housing element, use of a, I believe it was a IS MND, I don't see how it could be otherwise, in form, any challenge that we might expect to see here? For example, would we expect to see injunction, or how court would think about remedies? If I can make that friendly amendment.
So Nicholas, my recollection with the Los Angeles housing element was that HCD did not approve it. So I don't know that it has a revised housing element has yet been certified by the City Council in LA. But you may have more recent information on that. But you may have more recent information on that, but that was my recollection. And we were all surprised because LA's housing element had been written by the Turner Center, essentially. They had contributed to the analysis and had, had strongly recommended the, the analysis that, that was used by Los Angeles. So everyone was taken by surprise when HCD even turned down City of Los Angeles housing element.
Is that good, Nicholas?
Sorry, I was just saying, we're in the weeds, but I think it was approved in, in June of last year. But maybe we're, we're too far in the weeds here.
Okay, good. Let me move on. I'll move to our new commissioners now. So Linda, do you have any clarifying questions for staff at this point?
Yes, I do. And with your indulgence, since this is the first time I've said anything other than here, I would like to, first of all, I've been involved in dozens of different types of SEQA arrangements. And I think we're to be quite proud of our staff. Laura, I think you guys have done an amazing job. And, and you're to be congratulated for that. So thank you. And in addition to having done dozens of SEQA things, I've spent the last three days reading, I'm probably close to 1,000 pages now of regs and comments. I think our, our residents, I don't know how many are actually on the call, but they consistently amaze me, constantly amaze me with their intelligence insights, how articulate they are. And I think we're really lucky to have that combination of informed residents and staff. So I go into this and I hope very much that the residents will continue to be involved. I have a question that relates very much to the discussion that you just had. And if you'll, again, indulge me a little bit, I'm not really an expert. I'm not even barely able to speak the language on housing laws. But I did go back to the government code and read these laws today. And one of the things that I was fairly interested in is in my career in environmental law, almost every law that I've dealt with has either a citizen suit provision or an appeals provision or some sort of set of criteria by which impossible situations can be resolved. And I found nothing like that in this housing law. There was one place where they said something about if mitigation was not feasible, maybe you could figure that out and that usually means price. And then there was one other reference to health and safety, but no real appeals process. I think the only way this law is truly enforced, from my perspective as a lawyer, is by the builder's remedy. What the legislature did was they created this massive structure that towns and communities need to deal with. And then sure, you have these different things, but if you fail to act, you get this builder's remedy and the builder's remedy seems to be enlarging from my high 10,000 foot viewpoint on a regular basis. I just took a quick look at the legislature from last year and they put two new, more dense, if you will, into SEQA. One of them related to special problems they're having over at Berkeley with housing and another one related to some other streamlining of SEQA. So everybody knows and you all know better than I do probably that this builder's remedy kicks in if we don't meet certain deadlines. I mentioned that, not, not to show my ignorance of housing law, but to point out the incredible importance of SEQA in this environment. And John, I think your question goes to what I want to ask here. SEQA, of course, has citizen supervision and this whole housing structure with no other place to go, particularly aggrieved citizens of this state really have no other options other than to get involved at the SEQA level and a SEQA everybody knows has a citizen supervision. And I think that that puts really extra, extra sharp spotlight on our SEQA work here. And I hope other agencies feel the same way. And in that context, I really wanted to ask a question. I think it's too late to change, but I think the town made, there's different forks in the road when you go through a decision-making process with SEQA. And one of those forks is whether you do an EIR or a mitigated neg deck of some sort. And then there's other forks related to how you define your project and so forth. And I, Laura, I looked carefully at your slides and I understand that you've thought about this a lot. But I'd like to say, first of all, so everybody understands when, when an EIR is prepared and if it's challenged and goes to court, the numbers vary, but I'd say three out of four times an EIR is approved by the judge and they say, yeah, that's SEQA compliance. When an IS mitigated neg deck is challenged and goes to the court, it's less than half time that they say, yeah, you've complied with SEQA. So it's a riskier document. I will interrupt myself to say, Laura, you've basically done an EIR in the context of the amount of work you've put into it, but unfortunately it wasn't called that. So at that point, I guess part of my question is why you chose to take that fork as opposed to the EIR fork? And the second part of my question specifically relates to the guidelines, section 15168A3. This is a section of the California guidelines, their regulations issued under SEQA that basically is entitled Program EIR. And a Program EIR is for a series of actions that can be characterized as one large project, which are a bunch of rules, regulations and so forth. And I guess the reason this is important to me is that when you do a Program EIR, it presupposes subsequent project EIRs. When you do a project EIR, I don't think the case law supports subsequent project EIRs. So on each of those forks, I think you've made the decision, you've taken the, I don't know, what is it? Ogden Nash says the fork less traveled, you've taken the riskier fork. I think I could, I think I can make that argument without too much mud on my face. I understand the complexity of the word project, but I think in general, it refers to the projects where you're actually putting a shovel in the ground. And so that's why I asked this. I think the importance of SEQA as it being the only place anyone can bring, any, any citizen can bring an appeal of anywhere in this whole housing structure. And then second, the importance of those two forks in your road. I think at this point, you know, if you'd asked me this question, I might not have even figured it out a year and a half ago. But I think it's really important for you to, if you will, or if you agree with me, sort of elaborate here for your administrative record on why you made those two choices.
I would like to start very generally and then I'll ask Cara to weigh in and perhaps Rick as well. A big part of my thought process from my chair has been related to how I really think about the intent of SEQA and that is to inform people. And so we really set out to do a very comprehensive analysis in the MND and be very responsive in our response to comments consistent with that intent to inform. And so from my chair, we have met that intent and informed people. So I can tell you from my seat, that was a very important part of the decision-making. So I'll turn it over to Cara for more of the legal perspective on that.
Thank you. And, and great question. We, we did receive many comments on, on that particular issue. And it is, it is certainly a complex issue. We have a master response that addresses that issue as well. And I'll, I'll refer you to, to master response number one. But in general, when you are looking at impacts at a general plan level, you are looking at the whole of an action and you are looking at very broad brush policies. And policies are, are something that, that do, that are included in the definition of project. Policy documents are, are, as Laura mentioned, there are two different ways that we use project. But policy level documents are considered projects for purposes of SEQA. And so we do need to do some type of review. What we found when we looked at all of the policies in the general plan, most of the, the topic areas that are covered by SEQA are really addressed through the existing general plan policies. And so if you look at biological resources, we already have existing general plan policies and zoning code policies and processes in place when we take in applications that essentially address most of the impacts that we would see at a very broad level when we're looking at just general policy language. And we did not think it was warranted to do an exhaustive environmental impact report, which would cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars at this juncture. We thought that it was better to bifurcate the process, fully comply with SEQA by doing a ISMND to look at the policy level documents. And then as the projects came forward, we would take a deeper dive and look at specific footprint and building related impacts. So that was the approach we took. Rick, I don't know if, if you want to address that, the issue about the regulation that allows for program level EIRs. We've talked about this in the past. Be helpful for you to.
Sure. The, you know, the, one of the benefits of a program, a program EIR is a lot of upfront cost and a lot of upfront analysis that has to be done to, to, to deal with all the different angles of things. And once you prepare the program EIR, the city or the town has done sort of a favor for future developers because then they can rely upon and hear from that EIR and possibly avoid having to do an EIR for their own project where one might otherwise have been triggered. So in some ways, you know, it's, does the town do that upfront cost without having a clear way of recovering the cost of that? When, if it's done at the development site-specific level, the developer will have to pay for the EIR if it's, if it's needed. So in some ways, doing the EIR now makes it, simplifies it for future and reduces the ability to require site-specific environmental review in the future. That can't happen. I, using the term plan or a project for this in no way limits future environmental review. That's not the way the SEQA structure works. With this is a, the term project is a term of art or SEQA. Anytime you're doing any type of thing, whether it's a general plan or a use permit for a site-specific project, it's always called a project in SEQA terminology. And that doesn't mean that, or anyway contribute to the ability of future projects to avoid doing an EIR in the future. And as I said, in some type cases, it could actually reduce the ability to require the EIR or the need for the EIR for future projects.
Do you consider doing an ISMND called a program ISMND rather than a project ISMND?
We were debating that and I, I told the town, no, you know, that, that's, that's not a term under SEQA. You don't, you can't call it, you shouldn't try to call it a program MND because there's a definition for program EIR in SEQA. There's not a definition for program MND. That doesn't mean you can't do a mitigated neg deck for the plan, but I wouldn't try to attach a term that's not set forth in SEQA.
Yeah, and I, I think it's not prohibited and might have been wise, but okay. It's all water under the bridge at this point. I just think it would, in my, in my perspective, might have been slightly less risky, but you're right. On the other hand, you're making a new term and, but, but still using the program EIR section. So, well, thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Linda.
Can I just ask a question? When Laura talks and Cara talks, I can't see them. Is that me or is that just where the cameras are?
That's not you. The cameras are supposed to move based on who's talking into the microphones. And unfortunately tonight, they're not moving. But it's not something I can fix, unfortunately. So this is the best we've got for tonight and we'll have to try to fix it for future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Let me move to our other new commissioner, Ronnie. Do you have any questions for staff on these topics right now?
Yeah, thanks. I have a few. I guess first on the, in the master response, one, there's kind of a long paragraph, which in effect, says that kind of when we're judging the significance of the impacts, and it kind of compares it to, well, it makes the case out, we're trying to comply with state law. And if we didn't, there'd be consequences like the builder's remedy and, and stuff like that. But I didn't really see that. So I think we've broadly through the housing element process talked about that many times. And I think it makes a lot of sense. And I guess I was wondering about the relevance of it to the ISMND itself. I didn't really see that argument laid out in the ISMND. How should I be thinking about the significance of impacts? Is it relative to how things are now or how things would be if, like, we didn't comply and there might be builder's remedy and so on and so forth?
So I'll take a stab at that, Ronnie. The, under SEQA, we are required to look at the existing conditions as the quote unquote baseline and compare it to the proposed project. So this again is a SEQA requirement. There are lots of very specific statutory SEQA requirements. And there is a whole body of case law around what is the existing baseline. And so, and then what is the actual proposed project? When we started this project, we were not as focused on builder's remedy because it had not yet been asserted in Southern California. And so we, we produced the document thinking that the baseline was the existing conditions that, that were present on the site. As we, as we further thought about it, the, the existing baseline could be the ability of developers really to assert builder's remedy. And so in one sense, we are actually comparing a project that, that the status quo could be actually worse than the actual proposed project because the proposed project would be something that would comply with existing land use policies, et cetera. And so we thought that it was important just to describe this concept as, again, because it's a disclosure document and the document itself does use the existing conditions as a baseline. But we also thought that it was important to describe to the public the, a different type of analysis that could have been done in terms of selecting a different baseline.
Okay. And then I guess maybe a couple of questions on the topic of the aesthetics analysis. So, you know, there were a number of comments about this received and the master response to. One of the things that says new development within the Alpine Road corridor would not result in significant aesthetic impact. And this is kind of within the context that, okay, the general plan is, like you described, kind of provides some self-mitigation on the plan. But I mean, at the end of the day, that, you know, properties are being upzoned. And so we'll have, I think, some aesthetic impact. And I guess I'm struggling a little bit with how to think about, okay, is it significant or not? I mean, it seems like it's ultimately subjective and qualitative. So I guess the question is, are, are there any professional standards by which this was judged or case law? In the, in the intro slides, I didn't see like among the sub consultants, like who actually advised on aesthetics? And like, at the end of the day, like whose judgment is, is it that, that if it's significant or not to the impact?
Yeah. So Rick, could, could you take that general question about how to judge aesthetic impacts in the development of case law in this area?
Well, sure, it's, I mean, you sort of boil it down. The, the, the ultimate decision maker always is going to be like the town council. But if you've got, you know, th- there is some room for people to argue, well, my opinion itself is substantial evidence enough to trigger an EIR. And courts can go either way depending on the, the context and the circumstances and a, and a fair look at all the evidence before it. If you're looking at like one particular site, I think you're mentioning the Alpine Road site where there's a potential to add 23 units on a 1.18 acre site. Usually that's not going to be found significant under SEQA analysis. And, you know, so there, the, the staff's decision or recommendations and opinions, and ultimately the planning commissions and the town council's opinions all sort of weigh in on that. If you all weighed in on that, says, hey, we all think it's significant, maybe that's enough to say, oh, that, that kicks us into EIR territory. But that rarely happens, particularly when we're looking at this at a global perspective. The purpose of this document is not to look at the impacts of each individual site. If somebody comes forward with a development project for that particular site, there may be further site-specific analysis that has been done, but there's already a lot of safeguards built into the, the town's processes. And Cara was describing them to me earlier today better than I could in terms of what you have with the, uh, the cor- the corridor there. But from a global perspective, at this stage of the process, the mere act of sort of upzoning this one site is not in the, in town staff's determination raising a potential significant impact, obviously because it's going to be forced to comply with all the town's protective measures. And future development projects as they come forward may be further evaluated to ensure. And that even happened, I think, with the adjacent site, even though it was found to be a supportive housing. It still had to go through the city's objective review process to ensure that it didn't result in, in aesthetic impact. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I, that was my stab at it, I guess.
I ask a question, um, just out of quite honestly ignorance. Are there not criteria or characteristics associated with our Alpine corridor? And wouldn't that be a standard against which to judge aesthetics? I just don't know the, the details of our Alpine corridor.
There are.
Sorry, Ronnie, that's a friendly amendment to your question.
So if I could add a couple of things. We have the Alpine scenic corridor plan, which is a portion of the general plan that speaks to how development should occur. We have the 75-foot setback, which is in the municipal code. So that's one of the things that mitigates aesthetic impacts. And then I would also point out that the existing regulations, the existing zoning allows two-story buildings in all of those locations other than the Ford Field open space site. So the existing kind of baseline that we're comparing to is already a two-story building. And these documents have the possibility of there being a three-story building basically at those locations. So that change is not a very large change from a SEQA point of view, knowing that the scenic corridor setback of 75 feet would remain on the books.
Thanks, Laura. Uh, let me go back to Ronnie. You were asking about aesthetics. Did that answer your question? And do you have other questions?
Yeah. It, it, it may have actually answered my, another follow-on question that I had, but let me ask it anyways. I mean, so related to the aesthetic analysis, I wanted to kind of re-ask the question that Commissioner Haskell asked in the November 16th meeting, which basically relates to what is our role as the, as planning commissioners? With something like the aesthetic analysis, are, are we supposed to judge whether we agree that the impact is significant or not? Or do we kind of take that as an input that the SEQA experts have, you know, determined that this impact is not significant? And then kind of judge if that's, I don't know, significant as, uh, sufficient mitigated negative, negative declaration that's been prepared based on that? Sorry if that makes sense.
It does make sense. And I would say that the role of the planning commission, legally, you are a, in, in a case like this, you're the recommending body up to the town council. And so how different planning commissions and different planning commissioners interpret that role, I have seen that vary in the level of detail that they get into. And so planning commissioners have every kind of reasonable legal right to base your recommendations on your independent analysis. And so if your independent analysis is that, for example, you don't necessarily agree with the aesthetic recommendation, then it is truly up to you and your judgment as a resident representing the people to either say into the record, I don't think that this is sufficient. I think additional work should be done. Or to say, I may find that this is not sufficient, but in this case, I can see that the professionals came to this conclusion and I find it to be a reasonable conclusion. And so that you're going to see some variety and how planning commissioners interact with this kind of material. I don't know if Rick or Cara have anything to add to that. Oh, they're shaking their heads.
Uh, I think that's, I think that's all my questions right now.
If I can respond, I guess, to, to, to items that Ronnie raised, which I thought were great questions. So it's nice to have you, uh, nice to have you on the commission. Linda, of course, you as well. And, and the first issue that you raised was, what a baseline. And I just wanted to clarify whether we're really arguing that the baseline that we should be considering is based on a builder's remedy? And if so, can you describe what that baseline is and what the impacts are? And how we should think about it in comparison to what's being proposed? Or is it more rhetorical saying there's this other bad thing that might potentially happen that has some impacts? Cara, because I was, I was unclear how that worked. And Ronnie, I appreciated your, your bringing that up. Cara?
Sure. I, I'm going to defer to Rick on, on that one.
Sure. It, it, the baseline is what the original document states. I mean, that's, and that's the more conservative, safer approach. The baseline is the existing conditions.
Right.
And it's thus, in, in assessing the significance of that, though, you can take into account the fact that some of this, there's a very good chance of some of this happening anyway. What, if, then if the town doesn't adopt a compliant housing element, it could happen without, you know, being in compliance with the, the town's planning. So what, when we're dealing with all these things at a plan level and assessing the overall significance of the impacts of these issues, that factor, that reality out there helps and can be a factor that you can weigh in assessing the, the, the significance of the impacts on whether you're talking about aesthetics or, or emergency evacuation or whatever. That, that is a, that's a relevant factor to, as part of the whole, whole of the evidence taken, taken into account.
So it's a non-quantified, could happen, maybe. And I can think about it, but it's not actually the baseline. And the baseline that we're using is the current condition?
Certainly. I think the safe approach and the, you know, the, the, I mean, we always try talking about bulletproofing documents from future challenges. Uh, and it's never possible to bulletproof, you know, things completely. But the better, safer, uh, less vulnerable approach is for you to assume that the baseline is the existing conditions. You can, if you want to try, if a, if an agency wants to try to argue the baseline's something different, then they've got some work to do to explain and justify that.
Yeah, okay. That's helpful. I mean, I agree that trying to bulletproof a fair argument is a little bit like trying to tie a bow around jello. So the uh, other, other issue that Ronnie brought up, I thought was regarding aesthetics, was with respect specifically to the Dorothy Ford Park. And that doesn't, to my knowledge, have zoning that would permit a two-story structure on that. If I'm wrong, uh, please, uh, please let me know. And I guess the second part of that, another way of thinking about that issue is, are the elements addressing the open space character of that? Of that area consistent with a multifamily structure being built there? And I think that's an issue of interpretation and understanding of what the words mean within the context. And I'd like to to suggest that that's a very appropriate way and area for a planning commissioner to weigh in. Weighing in on the legal argument, I think, is one thing. Weighing in on a factual question is another. But trying to understand what potentially competing policies are seems wholly the province of what we're supposed to do. And if we don't do it, we're stepping away from our job. Anyway, I'm not sure it's a question, it's just an observation. So sorry, we're taking up time on that.
Through the chair, if I, if I could just respond to that, which we've also done a fair amount of, of thinking on. That's why we, we, it's, it's a really good point. The Dorothy Field project is, is something certainly that deserves more analysis. And I think that what we, the way we have structured this environmental review is that the, excuse me, Nicholas, I don't, uh, are you still there? You may have dropped out. Oh, okay. There you are. Yeah. Didn't want to be talking to myself. Do that enough. No. The way we, we've approached this project is that from a, again, a plan level, if we incorporate all of the protections that have been built into the particular project through the, the way mitigations which call for the preservation of open space and, and preservation of oak trees to the extent possible, et cetera, that at a plan level, we think that that is sufficient to, at least at this, at this juncture, determine that there is not a significant aesthetic impact to the corridor. Also taking into account, of course, the 75-foot setback that's, that's required under the zoning code and other Alpine corridor requirements in the corridor plan. So, but we do anticipate that there will be additional aesthetic analysis in the subsequent environmental review that is performed. But at this point, we don't have a project. We don't know, is the parking going to be above ground or underground? How, how many stories is the building going to be? Where is the building going to be situated? Are the oak trees going to stay there, going to be removed? Is there, is there going to be one building or two building? Is there going to be, you know, landscape screening, et cetera? And, and, you know, I think that that is the type of review that, that the community wants to see. And that certainly will be analyzed, but just not in this document because we don't, we don't have a, a project plan yet. So that's, that is the response. And again, that's something that the commissioners may disagree with, with that approach. But that's the approach that, that we have taken here.
And through the chair, I just wanted to make a clarification. When I was answering the question, I thought the question was about the Alpine scenic corridor in general, not specific to the site. So I just wanted to make sure that I got Commissioner Kryshinski's question correct when I answered that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Great. And I have no more questions after the ones my fellow commissioners asked. Laura, let me just clarify before I open it up to public comments. There, this is the end, or you've given the staff presentation, right? There's not going to be a presentation on the master responses?
No, we've concluded the presentation.
Okay, great. So I will open it up to public comments now. And then after that, as you, yeah.
I'm sorry, through the chair. Could, could we have a five-minute break, please?
So right now? Okay, usually.
Before we get into the, before we get into the, I know it'll, I expect we'll get a lot of comments.
I see. So you don't want to break it up. Okay. It's fine by me. Um, let's make it five minutes if people can do that.
So eight thirty-five?
Eight thirty-five, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll resume the meeting then. Great. And we have 18 attendees on Zoom. I actually can't report what there are in the schoolhouse.
There's two.
We'll now, two in the schoolhouse. Great. We'll take comments from the public now. I'll start with a few from Zoom and then move to some in the schoolhouse. So first up, uh, on Zoom, we have Martin.
I've only had five, can, can I, am I heard?
Yes, I can hear you.
So there, there's been a maximum of five windows on my Zoom. I didn't have a photo of the last person who was talking. It was a woman, this is before the break, who said that her analysis that a development at the Dorothy Ford Open Space would not impact the scenic corridor requirements. Who, who was that?
I think that was Cara Silver talking. And maybe you heard us say, we're sorry that the camera is not panning to the speaker like it's supposed to. So that's a technical glitch.
Okay, well, I'm a, this is Dr. Martin Miller. I reside at 53, 3350 Alpine Road for a little over 20 years, uh, directly across the street from that site. And quite frankly, nobody with any kind of education or intelligence could propose that any development at that site would not impact this scenic corridor. Aside from the fact that it's geologically, technically almost impossible, given the shallow shale, active mud-shallow status on the Stanford Geological Map and its close proximity to Lost Trancos Creek and the two 400-plus-year-old oak trees that reside there. So Uh, so um, quite frankly, the previous comments from Miss Silver seem quite absurd and, and very myopic, which means medically short-sighted. And, um, uh, it's just not a rational proposal to develop anything at this site. It was a donation to the town in its majority some fifty-two years ago now, nineteen seventy-one. And, uh, any development would really curtail a, any town residents' considerations for future donations to the town for open space. And most importantly, it's just not geotechnically feasible to develop anything there. Aside from the impact that it would have on the scenic corridor and of course, um, the valuation of my property. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And, um, I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the comments. We'll take all the comments and then we'll answer them and we'll actually ask the commissioners which questions to which they'd like the answer tonight, uh, so that we can deliberate or discuss the topic at hand and we'll focus, um, any answers on that set. Uh, let me go to another Zoom caller, David Cardinal.
Great, uh, thank you. Uh, two quick comments first. Uh, I think our, the staff did an incredible job on this. I wish people like this would document what happens in Sacramento and Washington because we might actually be able to figure it out. So I hope everybody reads that before commenting, um, whenever they can. I also hope that people don't just throw out stupid personal insults about our staff and our committee members. I find that it, it makes no sense in so many ways. It, it, and it just, I think depressing all around, but they do, I guess. So second, I think Ronnie and Nicholas are on the right track in that I believe the most important thing to think about right now, as far as my interpretation of the role of planning commission, is do we have a draft housing element that with proper mitigation, which there's plenty of opportunity for, can deliver a housing element that will actually provide housing? I mean, even, you know, it's not just make HCD happy. It's we have fifteen hundred people who work here, can't live here, and be nice for people that have housing, uh, without upsetting our, uh, values and the general plan more than necessary. Uh, and that was, is, as a voter, if you will, what I would love to see the discussion be about, um, legal issues aside, I think if we can pull off creating housing without upsetting the apple cart, uh, we'll be fine, is the short story, is my, my non-legal perspective. Um, so thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, let me ask people in the schoolhouse, are there any hands up there?
Yes, we have a hand up in the schoolhouse.
Great, let's take that one now.
And Bob, that mic may not be on, I'm sorry. I'm sure it's not.
The other, the other one might be on.
Can people, um, hear?
Can you hear me? Can you hear? I'm getting discordant answers. Yes, no?
Oh, now I hear, Bob.
Right. Um, thank you for, uh, to the residents who are volunteering for this commission, especially the new members. Um, this is an onerous job that you have, but so important. Um, so thank you for your, your commitment. Um, Portola Valley invented an approach to safe development in seismic and geologic hazardous lands that was adopted by the state and beyond. The process began with and was grounded in sober recognition of the hazards. We're not seeing a sober recognition of the hazards in this ISMMD and remarkably concludes that there are no significant impacts with respect to wildfire safety. And further, no mitigation is necessary. I encourage you to look at red page two twenty-one. Does this even ring true? Since 2010, the Maritz Fire Hazard Map has been designated in the general plan as the reference for the town, far more than merely a catalog of vegetation and incorporated, incorporated topographic and other features to identify eighty-nine percent of Portola Valley's area as high or highest hazard. Safety policies designed to mitigate risk, uh, to development, risk of development to the surrounding community are defined for these areas. And yet, in the draft housing element that Portola Valley submitted to the state, it was the discredited 2008 CAL FIRE map described by the fire district as inaccurate and unsafe that was included, not Maritz. CAL FIRE identified just six percent of Portola Valley's area as high or very high fire hazard severity. Six percent, does that even ring true? Does the fire district agree with this assessment? The proposed revisions to fire safety policies would be based on CAL FIRE's, not Maritz's, assessment, eliminating existing policies from up to eighty-three percent of Portola Valley's areas. Does the fire district think that's a good idea? In testimony to the Housing Element Committee last year, both the fire marshal and the town's safety, uh, fire safety consultant identified the Maritz Fire Hazard Map as the most accurate we have. If anything, they said, it understates rather than overstates our hazards. But I don't see that documented in any staff report or in the town's response to public comments. Why not? Why hasn't the testimony been included in the material presented to you? How can you make informed decisions without this knowledge? That's why you need to hear directly from the fire district and other primary sources. Does the district agree that dense development, high-fire hazard areas does not carry a significant impact and that home hardening is sufficient? Or does it share the view of CAL FIRE, NFPA, NIST, and other agencies that for wood-framed structures in high-hazard areas, adequate separation is necessary? For years to come, the safety of Portola Valley residents will depend on whether you insist that we soberly acknowledge and mitigate our hazards. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Are there any more hands up in the schoolhouse?
I'm sorry, I can't see around Bob. Rusty, do you have your hand up? Yes, um, Rusty Day.
Okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, although, uh, could you speak, um, it's just a little quiet, but I can hear.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. I also want to thank very much the volunteers, uh, who joined this committee, especially the new members, uh, and the time and the effort that you obviously devote to this. It's critically important. Thank you. I want to address the ISMMD. I'm not addressing the housing element. I'm addressing the ISMMD. And the first thing I'd like to address is the precedential effect that it has. So is it a project ISMMD or a program ISMMD? Will it have the precedential effect of eliminating the need for future projects that fall within the scope of the project as defined? From assessing their environmental impact on wildlife habitat, on creeks, on geologic safety, on wildfires, because it's already been assessed in this ISMMD, yes or no? What will its precedential effect be? And what right will citizens have to insist that future projects, such as at Ford Field or elsewhere, go through a full EIR to assess the effect they have on wildlife habitat, riparian corridors, wildfire safety, seismic safety? I think that the administrative record needs to be clear and the answers need to be clear tonight. Second question, second point I want to make is about the wildfire hazard and risk in the ISMMD. When are we going to hear from the fire district? When are we going to hear whether the fire district agrees that there's no significant effect on wildfire hazard and risk? Not just hazard, but risk. Because the California State Attorney General makes it very clear in the, in his guidance that the assessment that matters is the assessment of risk, not hazard. The assessment of impacts onsite and offsite to all of the surrounding areas. Does the fire district agree that there's no significant impact? What have they told you? When are we going to find out? The third point I'd like to make addresses the scenic corridor. The question was raised about the scenic corridor, about the aesthetic effects. But aesthetics is not the only issue in the scenic corridor. When the scenic corridor was set up and when the general plan was implemented last, last revised, uh, in 2010, uh, with the safety element, land use policy in the town identified the areas that were at high risk and set them aside as open spaces in a scenic corridor. It did it because lands along Alpine Corridor are all subject to liquefaction. They're crossed by two faults and they're in a very high fire hazard severity area. Not to mention they're subject to flooding. That's why those lands are in a scenic corridor. That's why they're set aside in open space. Not only are they beautiful, not only do they create an aesthetic corridor to the town, but they are unsafe for development. Where is the assessment of those risks in the ISMMD? You won't find it. It's nowhere there.
Thank you, Rusty. So I guess no more in the schoolhouse if there were only two people attending, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. So I'll go back to some Zoom callers. Let's see, next we have Patty Dews.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Patty Dews. I'm chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee. And probably no surprise to mention that I don't agree with the, uh, comment or the assessment about response to the Parks and Rec area. It seems to me, and I'm new at this, so please excuse the ignorance, but it seems to me that we're, at least in the comments, confusing open space with parks and rec. So the town has a lot of open space, a lot of incredible open space. As a resident, I absolutely love it. But you know what? You can't play soccer on Windy Hill. Well, you can, but I wouldn't want to be defending the uphill goal. Uh, you, you know, you can't play softball at the Frog Pond. You can't walk dogs on Spring Down. You can't play tennis at Triangle Park and kids can't play on Shady Trail. I mean, those are not Parks and Rec facilities. If you're going to add seven hundred and thirty-eight residents to this town who want to do the above activities, which are parks and rec activities, they're all going to go to those limited facilities that we have. And those limited facilities, well then, in my humble opinion, sustain an impact. You're going to have a lot of kids going next door, um, if you build on, on Dorothy Field Park to play lowly. You're going to have them walking down the field, the, 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 the road to play at Rosati's, et cetera, et cetera. You're going to have, oh, by the way, uh, sorry, we only have three tennis courts. Not four, unless you're, unless you're saying you want to build me one. Um, anyway, I digress. I guess my question is, are we talking about open space or are we talking about parks and rec? Because if we're talking about open space, then yes, I agree, we have a lot. If we're talking about parks and rec facilities, then I disagree with the assessment and I strongly believe that adding that many people into this town will affect those limited parks and rec facilities that, that will allow them to have the activities that, that those parks and rec facilities were made to, to be used for. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Uh, next we have Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my camp, uh, comments. The Al camera has not worked since the last blackout in the town center a few weeks ago. Uh, someone just turned it on and turned it back off. Uh, my home is only about nine years old, but before it was approved aesthetically and material-wise, I had to do many steps for approval. But it seems that what we are asking to do, uh, for the future is no controls. And if we push back, the developer can do whatever they want, uh, with all these little threats. Uh, does that mean that when people build homes in our town moving forward, they should check a few extra boxes early in the process and then they can do whatever they want in building? Uh, Mr. Turcot also already made comments about the fire hazard, and so I won't repeat my comments there. But we also have geo-hazard, uh, threats to biodiversity streams and so many other reasons that we need SEQA. And SEQA should not be ignored in this beautiful town. And, uh, just another clarification, uh, people keep saying Dorothy Ford Field. Dorothy Ford Field is where the baseball diamond is and the little parking area. Uh, but it seems that, I don't think that the housing is going to be built on the baseball diamond. Uh, you're actually referring to where those two, uh, oaks across from Dr. Miller and, uh, and, but, you know, we should keep the language consistent and, and within the town when we're talking about these things. Our general plan, which is a beautiful document, has comments on affordable housing and, uh, and how it should look like the regular housing in town. So aesthetically, uh, how, you know, the quality of the materials and stuff. And I don't hear, uh, these issues being discussed. The land should not be less stable and the beauty should not be less desirable. There's a reason why there are no buildings on the Alpine Corridor right now, especially located at Dorothy Ford Park. Historically in America, housing for underserved people has been built in less-than-ideal areas, next to train tracks, on ramps, flooding areas, et cetera. And we should be offering our new neighbors our best, not trying to find workarounds to offer them our worst that we wouldn't live in. We can do better and should not ignore SEQA assessments for future housing in this town, uh, to meet the reigning numbers. And I hope we all pull together and can do better and follow SEQA guidelines because it's important. There's a reason why it's there. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Let's see, and next, um, on Zoom, we have Nan Shastek.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, thank you for taking my question and, uh, congratulations to the two new commissioners and, uh, and also to the town staff for, um, putting together this very, very complex, um, project or program or whatever it is, the, the document for the ISMMD. I'm responding to the master response four, which is on geology and soils. I was, um, pleased to see such a very, very detailed response, the master response, and, oh, wasn't expecting, you know, I was expecting to, to, um, to, uh, uh, to, to respond on a, uh, is a high, a higher level, but it got into the Stanford wedge, which surprised me. And there was, there were a couple of statements about the wedge that I think are misleading or incorrect and that I would like to comment on, although I didn't want to get into the, um, the wedge specifically. But here we are. Um, there's a statement on page nineteen, red page twenty-nine, and the agenda for tonight. Um, it says Stanford conducted a comprehensive boring investigation, spore holes, to confirm that the fault, hermit fault, was not present at the contact between two sandstones, Whiskey Hill and Ladera. Um, they may have intended that, um, when they started their trenching study, but they did not find the fault was present. No, they did not confirm, they did not confirm that the fault was not present at the contact between these two sandstones. Um, the contact hasn't been located yet, and that's, that's, I'll get to that in a second. Um, although the hermit fault was always assumed to be the contact between these two stand, so, sandstones. A fault could actually be anywhere on the wedge or maybe not there at all. Okay, the second point is that the, um, response, the master response says that no evidence of an active fault was detected. Uh, not quite true. Uh, Cornerstones, that's Stanford's consultants. Cornerstone's own detailed trench log, which is a sketch of one of the trench walls, does show evidence of recent ground deformation, quite likely seismically related. But it wasn't mentioned in the report and it was not picked up in peer review. It is there if you look carefully. Uh, this deformation would meet the state's definition of act. This deformation would meet the state's definition of active and should have resulted in the conclusion of potentially significant impact from seismic related ground failure in the ISM and D. The possibility of a buried fault, which this could be, has been swept under the rug in trench log and all photos of the trench wall should be carefully reviewed. Last point, if I may, and I'm out of time. Cornerstone suggested to Stanford in the report to dig a second trench where Stanford, where where Cotton Shires thought the hermit fault was originally before it was removed from the map in 2017. Stanford hasn't carried through with its consultant's recommendation. I'd like to know why. Thank you.
Thanks, Nan. Okay, I think we've gotten to the end of the public comments. Is there any last minute hands? Kristi? Corley?
Thank you and welcome to the new planning commission members. I believe that we need the ability to do a full E I R rather than a mitigated negative declaration proposed at this point. I am concerned about air quality, noise, traffic, biological resources. I would like to point the residents to page 17 of the M N D and see what boxes were checked there. My question still remains, why wasn't every box checked for the mitigated negative declaration that we are considering tonight to be voted on? So so I would like to see a full traffic report, a pre and post noise report. I'd like to see riparian corridors respected, which is 55 feet setback. I'd like the scenic corridor to be respected. I live on Alpine Road. We've respected that setback in our home and I do listen to the traffic every day. But I I treasure the 75 foot setback and we abide by the building guidelines. We are not given concessions and waivers and all kinds of things that developers would get. So we created this in our general plan for a reason and we moved here for that reason, for the nature that we respect. So the environment can't talk, so we have to talk for the environment. And I I also wonder with Dorothy Ford Park and Ford Field, if in fact, in the past, we have donated to an open space fund through our taxes in different years. And if any of that money that kept Dorothy Ford Park and Ford Field going came from those funds, it's of concern. I I did look into the softball field. It's 600 kids play on it. There's a very large creek behind it called Lost Tranquill Creek. Goes through many of the housing sites. We need to look at the tributaries that go into those creeks. They are unnamed tributaries, but they do go into our major creeks. And after going through the storms we just went through, the riparian setback is extremely important. In fact, Lake Lagunitas, they are not draining it because of the endangered California salamander. So I'm wondering if we've found that salamander in any of our.
Finish up, Kristi? Thanks. Are you about done?
Yeah, I'm about done.
Great, thank you. Let's see, we have one more hand up. Jay White, that Jim.
Sorry about that. You know, I've heard all this and I think you guys have a very difficult decision. I think I'm muted. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yeah, we heard, the last we heard was you have a very difficult decision. Did you say more after that?
I, yes, so I just hope you can make a process that helps anyone who's going to develop a project have any certainty on what something is able to do here in Portola Valley. The uncertainty that you hear in these meetings, the achievement of perfection versus ability to move forward, I think, is an interesting challenge. I think there's always interesting questions. We love this town. But I can see how it's very hard to, for example, just even make this negative declaration on SEQA without doing multiple, you know, iterations here of unending questions, which will impact a housing element, which will impact obviously a certification. So good luck. My encouragement is that you actually use some reasonable judgment and are able to give folks who want to do projects here some confidence that there's certainty that it's worth working on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, are there any more questions or hands up? Okay, I see none, so we'll, I'll close the public comment part of the meeting. Um, as we said, we will, the commissioners will highlight questions to which they would like an answer at this meeting. Let's see, what's the most efficient way to kind of go through that? Do commissioners want to throw out questions that they'd like to hear the answers to?
Sure. You want us to jump in, Ann?
Yeah, that'd be great, John. Thanks.
Okay, well, it's simple for me. Actually, there were no questions that I thought had not already been discussed and answered at least twice in the course of our discussions so far. So no, I did not need anything from our experts.
Okay, good. Any other comments from commissioners? I actually agree with that. I have comments about some of them, but I I already have heard the answers several times. Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I mean, obviously I'm new to this. I found references to a discussion with the sheriff, but I didn't really find a citation or a letter. And this goes to the point of whether or not adding, you know, 10% to our population is going to require additional sheriffs. I felt like I'd sure like to see something more than second or third hand from that discussion, like a letter from the sheriff. And I feel the same way. And and again, I apologize since I'm new to all of this, but I feel the same way about the fire. There's a lot of controversy and quite a few comments and a massive amount of information, but and and in our packet, it said that someday here we'd hear from the fire marshal. I'd like that someday to be real fast. So I think those are two important officials who I feel like should have provided something in writing to help us make this decision. I don't know I have any other projects. I'm very sympathetic to the comment about parks and recs. I mean, the simple fact is this mitigated, this ISM mitigated deck is supposed to cover an introduction of additional people. I don't know the number, close to 10% to our population and anybody who's tried to get on the pickleball court or anywhere else knows how busy our fields are. So that's one very obvious place where I can't see no impact. And basically that's what the document says. So that that bothers me and that bothers me in three or four other areas. But I think at this point, then back to Nicholas's comment, I have to trust the judgment of the professionals. But when we're talking about other agencies that have direct authority over our town, I feel like I'd like to hear from them directly. Sheriff and the fire marshal.
Ronnie or Nicholas? Okay, go ahead.
Through the chair. It it looks like we're getting into discussion at this point. And so I would, I would suggest that we segment the the issue on the sequoias under, under the F P P C regulations. That discussion needs to occur first before the general discussion. So Sheriff, if 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 you want to to get into discussion, we would ask Commissioner Krashinsky to leave the room.
Okay, good. No, I'd like to see if the commissioners have any other questions that they want staff to answer based on the public comments, basically. Ronnie or Nicholas?
Ann, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, and I don't without meaning to be difficult, I'm not sure where we are or what the issue is. I know that there was a strategy that we were supposed to call out areas that we would like to see elaboration on or discussion about. Is that where we are now or?
You know, here's where we are. We often get questions from the public and they're all good questions. Sometimes they don't relate to the topic right now that we need to discuss. So right now, we're just asking the commissioners, which of the public comments would you like to get answers to tonight versus questions that could be left to another time? John Goulden clarified that he thought he actually did not need answers to any of them because they've all been answered at previous meetings. But I want to give you a chance, if there's any questions that you want to highlight that you'd like staff to address right now, highlight those now.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would like to spend some time on wildfire issues. I was, I think that there was an argument, I couldn't quite tell, that both the Moritz map and the hellfire map were both outdated and so both of them are equally bad. But I wasn't sure that I was actually following that. I certainly didn't understand or didn't track the what was the apparent inconsistency in population numbers that I raised before. I think it got a two line response in explanation and I maybe needed to sit down with somebody to walk me through that. But I think that probably we should spend some time addressing Bob Turcot's issues that he raised and I'd certainly be interested in understanding if we're really saying that both maps suck and therefore we've got our choice. And if if I oversimplifying that help, help me.
Okay, thanks. We'll put those on the question list. Ronnie, any questions that you'd like to highlight for staff to respond to?
One other thing that Rusty Day asked about was precedential effects. And I think it's been answered in the document, but if there's any other comments on that.
Okay.
I think it's probably a clarification. One of the questions from Rita Comas was, does that mean that people will be able to build houses in the future if they check a few boxes and not have you? And so maybe just clarify the impacts there. Nan Shostek's questions. Yeah, I guess I wanted to understand the significance of having the Stanford wedge example called out there. And does it have any impact on the Stanford wedge E I R? And Kristi Corley asked about concessions and waivers that developers would get. And so maybe we can clarify if that. I think that's it.
Okay, so do you want me to try to field some of these questions amongst our team? Some of them probably were in discussion.
Right, right. To the extent they can just be answered, that would be great. And then I understood from Cara, we can get those answers from you and the experts. Then we'll stop and take a break. Ronnie will be recused. We'll talk about any issues that come up with the sequoias. Ronnie will come back, then we'll discuss all the topics. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, if you.
I'm sorry, Ann.
Could take over, Laura. That'd be great.
One clarification, it looks like if there is going to be specific discussion about the Stanford wedge and the earthquake fault and how that relates to the Stanford wedge.
Oh, yeah.
E I R. We may have to bifurcate that discussion as well, the two.
Yes. Right. And I guess the question is, do we need to answer those questions or discuss that now, since we weren't going to do project specific topics at this meeting or with this ISM and D, right?
Correct. Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't think we want to get into the area of having to deal with the conflicts on the Stanford wedge project. So my suggestion would actually be to go to Rick to advise us on, you know, the Stanford wedge has its own separate E I R process that's underway. And we're working on the response to comments now for Stanford. And so some of these comments probably best live in that document and in that discussion and may not be necessary or warranted for inclusion in this M N D. And so I was just wondering if Rick could help us to understand the relationship between those documents and how we might think about that.
So, yeah, I mean, I haven't even been involved in the Stanford wedge project, but that is, this document in no way, the M N D for this project in no way facilitates or helps or hurts the Stanford wedge project. That's subject to its own sequel process. It's going on its, on an independent track. This document, I guess, you know, the housing element relies in part on Stanford wedge as providing a certain share of the city's anticipated housing that if that doesn't go forward, might have to go be designated somewhere else. But but this project otherwise does not facilitate Stanford wedge. The the sufficiency of the E I R for Stanford wedge, which I've not seen and I've not ever looked at, is in no way dependent on what we're, on the housing or this mitigated neck deck. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
So in our response to comments, we do include information related to the Stanford wedge project. And we have two planning commissioners that are conflicted for the Stanford wedge project. And so I think Cara's point is, do we need to bifurcate that discussion? Or is that analysis on the Stanford wedge project really even necessary in that response to comments? Should we, since there's already a separate E I R process, should we kind of leave those as more separate?
Are we saying that we should, should we remove that from the response to comments? I mean, typically if somebody asks a question about something, then you sort of address it, you know, as an informational item. But it's not really because you want to see where everything fits in the big picture, so to speak. But I don't see the need for, you know, a substantive, I mean, it's, there's not a need for substantive discussion of Stanford wedge unless somebody's asking for or has questions about it. And if somebody, if a planning commissioner has questions about it and somebody's got a conflict, then they might need to be accused for that.
Okay, so then through Okay, so then um, through the chair, I think it's a question of whether the planning commission tonight wants to have a substantive discussion. About that section of the response to comments that discusses the Stanford project. And if so, then those planning commissioners should probably recuse from that specific discussion. Um, Cara, is that, okay, yeah. So if the planning commission wishes to discuss those things, then we need to bifurcate.
I guess.
And, and making sure that the public and the planning commission understand that those issues would be discussed. With the Stanford E I R process in an upcoming meeting where those commissioners would already be recused.
Hmm, yeah. No, it certainly makes sense to me that we keep this at the high level housing element uh, level. Just for the reason that the Stanford wedge is going to get discussed on its own at its own meeting. It's my thoughts.
Alright, so I don't know to what extent this is in reference to me going or asking about uh, Nansho's tax question, but. Yeah, I guess I wasn't imagining getting into the particulars of the Stanford wedge is more. I guess the question I was trying to um, pull out of it was for the IS M and D and the fact that. The response to comments is kind of giving an, an example related to the Stanford wedge project. Just maybe a clarification, I mean, which I think we've kind of had, will that have any impact on? What happens inside of the Stanford wedge, E I R? And or like, what is, what is the function of that example in the IS M and D?
So the first part of the question is the discussion, any discussion that the planning commission has on this M and D does not impact. Any future discussion on the Stanford E I R. And I'm looking to, okay, good, attorneys are nodding their head. Um, so that's the first part of it. And the second part is, I think you're saying, like, why was it included? Like, why is it an example?
Those details, like, so man raised some issues, like, kind of maybe disagreeing with some. Aspects of the example that was included in the response to comments. So like, why, yes, why was that example even in there, I guess?
So one of the reasons is that um, we had previous public comments related to the Hermit Fault. Which is one of the names for the potential fault that might go through that area. And the planning commission had asked for additional information on that in the previous planning commission composition. And so this was one of the ways of staff trying to address comments that came up from previous planning commissioners about that. So I guess the question through the chair is whether um, if that satisfies your interest, Ronnie, and then we don't have to bifurcate a specific discussion. Okay, so then I think we can go ahead and just not get into detail and not have the recusal. Okay, so then um, I'll try to address a couple of the questions that came up and then some of them are probably um, well-served in the discussion. Um, section of the meeting.
Great, okay, sounds good.
Okay, so um. There's from uh, Commissioner Brothers, there's a question or kind of a statement about the um, fire district participating. The sooner rather than later. Um, my current plan is to have the fire marshal, assuming he's available, I believe that he is. Um, attend the next meeting of the planning commission when this topic is next discussed. And or the housing element overall is next discussed, and that's tentatively on February fifteenth, pending um, feedback from the town council. So um, we would anticipate that the fire marshal will join staff in our presentation. Um, and so um, you can hear from him directly. Um, in regards to the com- comment about input from the sheriff, thank you, that comment is well taken. And we'll follow up on that and get back to the planning commission um, at an upcoming meeting. Um, there's discussion about, kind of question about um, fire safety and the maps and what's included. And I'll try to um, explain the way I am viewing it and then we can see um, if Cara wants to weigh in as well. Um, so the housing element site selection. Um, was based on a number of different factors, not just based on the Cal Fire map. The Cal Fire map is included, that's true. Um, but other factors were also considered, including um, topography and slope, which is um, one of the ways that we measure fire risk. As well as evacuation routes and um, sites that only had one way in and out um, for access. As well as the testimony of the Deer Creek Resources, um, Zeke Lender. As well as feedback that we received directly from the fire district, um, from the fire chief and from the fire marshal. So all of that went into the site selection for the housing element. The safety element um, includes, it's part of this IS M and D. Includes both the Cal Fire map and the Moritz map. So that's included there and there's a cross-reference between the safety element and the housing element. So there is a connection between those documents. The safety element is in draft form. Um, and we've known all along that there could be fire maps coming out from Cal Fire. Or from the fire district at kind of any time um, during this process. We thought they might come out last fall and then we heard this winter and we're still waiting to see what the timing of that may be. Um, I also wanted to point out, we haven't talked about it for a while, but in the housing element itself. There are programs related to fire safety and this also speaks to that um. Kind of idea of things being self-mitigating to a certain degree. And so in the housing element itself, there are programs um, starting with goal number three related to resilient housing. And managing wildfire vulnerability. And so those programs include, um, you know, we do a regular three-year update to our building code cycle. So now every three years when we do the regular update, we would work with the fire district and improve our building safety standards. Um, so we started that practice already in the code cycle that went into effect um, just now in January. So that would now happen automatically so that we're keeping up with the latest what people call home hardening um, strategies. So that's one of the programs. We have a program to update the town's landscaping regulations and guidelines um, with best practices with respect to fire safety and water usage. So that's already going to be done um, considering a supportive program to assist households with vegetation management. And then the big one that's related um, to the mapping is to review and adopt as appropriate fire hazard maps. So it's already written in here that either Woodside Fire Protection District or Cal Fire will be coming out with new maps. And once those maps are available, then the town would consider adoption of whichever one um, comes out and what makes sense. And then right here is their language to reevaluate sites to determine if any new sites are needed. Or if any new fire prevention message um, measures are needed. So we do have that language in the program. Um, and then we also have, once those new fire hazard maps are available. To evaluate our A D U and our S B nine ordinances. To determine if any new fire prevention measure, me- um, measures are needed there. So um, that's part of the equation that we know that new maps are coming and there may be a need to reevaluate. And strengthen some of our policies once the new maps are there. But um, remember that since it's in the housing element, that kind of falls into that category of this is somewhat self-mitigating. So when we look at everything as a whole, you know, that's how we want to think about this is really um, comprehensively as a whole. And I would just say too, I've been um, talking with the fire marshal in more detail about the Moritz maps. And part of our conversation has been um, that the Moritz maps are based only on vegetation. And vegetation is the part of the equation that can change. Um, unlike topography and weather um, and wind, which are things that we don't control or are hard to change. Um, I don't control the weather and topography is hard to change and not an environmental um, preferred alternative. And so um, we've been talking about the fact that we wouldn't want to base all of our land use policies on factors um, that can change. Um, over time that we want a comprehensive look at that and that's one of the things that we're working on and hopefully he'll be able to speak to. Um, when we bring him in. Uh, Cara, anything to add on that answer?
Nope, I think you covered it. Thanks Laura.
Um, okay, then looking at um, the possibility of precedent. Um, I think I understand um, Rusty's question, so um. Commissioner Krashinsky, let me know if this uh, meets your needs for understanding. The language um, between project and program, you know, I certainly recognize is confusing. Um, I think the most important question is, does it eliminate the need for future analysis? And the answer to that is no. Am I saying it right? I'm sorry, I'm already getting tired. It's been a little bit of a long day for me. Does it eliminate the need for future analysis? No, it doesn't. Um, each future project, I just like, my brain completely went away. Um. Each future project would be evaluated based on site-specific characteristics. And the type of project. And then we would be applying any exemptions that already exist in state law. They're not tied to this housing element process. So if the exemptions already exist in state law, those of course would continue. And then any um, future project would be evaluated in, based on its specifics at that time. And the law that's in place at that time, because sequel law and housing law continues to change. So that's the other thing that we don't know. Um, so Rick, did I miss anything other than I blanked out for a minute? Okay, he's giving the thumbs up. Cara?
Yes, I, so there's just one more, one, one thing I'd add to that is that if, if we look at precedent. You know, we look at the last housing element that was also certified or, or um, that, that was certified in fifth, fifth cycle. And that had an IS M and D um, that very similar that analyzed at a plan level, the new housing element. And um, that did not cover or exempt in any way or. Eliminate or illuminate whichever word you want to use, um, the need to do um, subsequent. Sequel analysis on the Stanford project and as you recall that this, the Stanford wedge project um, was. Um, included in, in the um. Housing element as an affiliated housing site. And so I think that that is a consistent approach that. You know, we took back then and that we are continuing to take.
And um, Rita was asking some questions around.
Sorry, can I, can I follow up on that please? And my guess is Linda probably also has some thoughts on that. So I'm not sure if we should just go through this and uh, or whether we should pause on this point for a second. How would you, I'm, and I'm happy to proceed however you, you'd like.
Oh, I'd love it if the staff could get through the answers to all the questions and then we um, have discussion.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, okay, so Rita was asking questions. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure that I understood it, but it was about. Um, when people come in to build houses, could they just check the boxes? And I understood it, like, would they be getting out of any requirements? Um, nothing in this housing element, I am, in the IS M and D changes the process for single-family home development. Um, so there wouldn't be any change to that process. Um, in terms of development projects that come forward. They'd be subject to the process that's outlined either in the housing element, the zoning code to be written or our existing um, policies. Uh, but there are state laws that impact our review authority for certain types of projects. So there are cases, if she's referring to checkboxes, sometimes people refer to ministerial projects as checkboxes. And those are certain projects that um, are approved based on objective criteria. But basically, any reasonable person would come to the same conclusion. And there are certain projects like that, but only as required by state law. It would not proliferate. And then Christie asked about concessions and waivers. Um, and the commission um, has talked about concessions and waivers under state density bonus law quite a bit. And so we'd be happy to share with the new commissioners um, that information in past discussions, so you can get up to speed on that. Um, that concludes, I think, the answers to the um, commissioners' follow-up questions from the public.
Let me just look through my list.
And unless there's anything else we would want to answer from the public's questions, um, I would recommend uh, through the chair that you formally close the public comment. Um, just so that we have that on the record.
Okay. Let me just look through my list, just a moment. Okay, that's good. Great, I'll close the public comment section then. Um, the plan now is that we're going to open it up for discussion and we're going to bifurcate it. And have uh, any discussion that relates to the Sequoias for which Ronnie has to be recused. Is it reasonable for me to just ask the commissioners, do they have any discussion points that relate to the Sequoias? Cause I think there's a chance the answer to that's no. Then we wouldn't have to uh.
That's fine.
Is that right?
Oh, that's fine to do it that way, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Okay, good. So we're closing the public comment section. Now we're going to go into discussion. And I will ask my fellow commissioners, do they have any uh, points that they might, don't make the point, but just. Will you have any points that relate to the Sequoias?
I do not.
I see a no from Linda. How about you, Nick? Okay, and neither do I. Okay, good. So that's the bifurcated part and now we will close that part and now go to the discussion. Just in general on the housing element. And I mean, the IS M and D, as it relates to the whole housing element, not just the Sequoias. Um. Good, so I'll start with the, how about John? Do you mind going first?
I don't mind going first, but I'm afraid I'm a broken record on this. It's actually, I'm.
Okay, actually, let me uh, just, I forgot to say at the beginning, we're not making a decision tonight. But we're going to have to make a decision soon, like probably February fifteenth. Uh, where each of us will decide or make a statement about whether we're sending this on. With a recommendation to the town council or not. I mean, it'll still get sent on to them. But it'll be part of a meeting where we're also talking about the um, housing element, the sites. And the general plan amendments and this. So at that meeting, we're not going to have time to rehash this part out. So this is our chance to hash this out, even though we're not going to make a decision right now. Is that clear? So, but I think it's good if we have discussion and see where we are and see if any, like, just last uh. Things that, that could be answered before our next meeting come up. Um, yeah, so we'll just talk about where each commission is. Thinking, what they're thinking about and uh, we can discuss among ourselves too after each of us speak. Now, go ahead, John. Thanks.
So um, I'm actually pretty comfortable with, with where we are on this. So um, I don't have any additional questions that I need to get answered. I feel like between our previous meetings on this. Um, my previous questions and the other commissioners' questions along the way and the answers that we've received. Uh, that, that I'm, I'm fine with what's going on here. I do not have anything additional to add or need to discuss.
Okay, good. Let me go on to Nicholas next.
Yeah, uh, so on issues of fire, and we've, you know, I've raised it before, uh, we need to have the. Uh, Marshall uh, in, and in as before. Uh, Rusty gave a uh, very helpful, interesting presentation. And uh, and I believe that we were going to uh, have a further discussion built around. Uh, that, uh, the issue of streamlining, uh, and whether. This document uh. Uh, could be used to foreshorten uh, additional uh. Uh, analysis regarding entitlements. I think the answer. analysis regarding entitlements. I think the answer is yes, of course. And to, but with respect to the question of, will it take away Sequoia review opportunities? And the answer to that is, of course, we're going to go through Sequoia and do whatever is required by law. But this document will create the basis for, I would think for addenda, unless Rick, you tell me that I'm missing something. Or it can also be used as part of of other sequence analysis, or potentially the basis for an exemption. It would all be consistent with law, but that's not to say that this document won't have a life outside of this this housing element in general plan modification. I think it's important to really be square about what it is that it is and what it isn't. And the city will, of course, excuse me, the town will, of course, follow the law. We will take all projects through Sequoia analysis to the extent that is required. But this document can provide the basis for having a more abbreviated process, or could be, create the basis for an exemption, or could create the basis for an off-ramp. And Rick and Cara, if you think I'm wrong, please, please clarify and help me out.
Well, the only clarification is I would, I don't think anybody could do a site-specific addenda tiering from a neg deck. If this was an EIR, a program EIR or whatever, then maybe you can do an addendum, but, but because we're doing a neg deck here, I don't, I think it would be very, I mean, you can do addendums for neg decks.
Yep.
Under certain circumstances, I don't see it happening in a tiering manner here. That's the.
Can I, through the chair? Rick, I think it's useful for the planning commissioners to hear a different voice on this, because we've been talking about it a couple of times, and it's very complicated. And so could you give the planning commissioners an example where you think a future project, let's use the word, may build off of this analysis, or more may reference it? Is that a way to think about it? And how would you explain that or give an example?
I don't see it as being that possible. I mean, we're talking the abstract here, so don't hold me to this. But if this was an EIR, and the EIR was certified as a certain, like cumulative or townwide issues, then you can tier off of it a lot easier. But because this is a neg deck, I haven't seen, I mean, the, the sequel guidelines have a whole process for doing tiered IRs and, and so on. But that process doesn't exist for negative declarations. And because all we're saying here is that the adoption of the housing element by itself as a programmatic document for the city or for the town will not result in any unmitigated significant impacts. I'm not used to, I have, I'm not even aware of examples of other project-specific documents tiering from a neg deck or a general plan type of document. I don't know if that answers the question or if you want to keep talking.
I think that that's helpful. And as a planner, I can tell you, the way I imagine using this document is referencing it to help me understand what studies or what approach might be necessary for a site-specific environmental review. So it's going to help me to understand the potential for biological impacts, for example, but not the specific biological impacts that may be on that site. So I imagine that the planners will use it as a reference to help guide them on what types of studies and what types of consultants might be necessary for individual analysis.
Certainly a lot of work's been done on the document by staff, and so there can be some helpful analysis that helps you think through how you've dealt with this before in the context of this document, but certainly for a future project-specific sequel review, it is much more challenging to tier off of a, you know, a programmatic neg deck, which as I said, doesn't really exist under the, under the Sequoia law.
I, I would chime in, though, that the mitigation measures that are identified in, in the mitigated negative declaration will have to be incorporated into future project review. Maybe those could serve as, you know, a template for standard conditions of approval for future projects. Another maybe perspective on this is that, you know, when you look back at, at some of the past projects that the town has approved, we, we haven't ever referenced the former housing element negative declaration. It, you know, that may be that we don't, we haven't had a lot of projects that have come forward, but thinking about, say, the priory, which was, there was a mitigated negative declaration that encompassed the priory. However, the priory proceeded under a separate analysis when they developed their own housing units. So that's, that's just some context to, to think about as well.
Am I out of order if I comment on this topic, or may I?
Feel free.
I mean, I think this conversation points out why in my simple mind, this mitigated neg deck is more of a prog- program mitigated neg deck than a project. Cause if you put it in your mind that way, it's the program, it's the policies, it's the rules, it's the paperwork. And, and, and yeah, the impact, I would argue, and it hasn't necessarily been done here, would be the environmental impact of the full elaboration of every one of those things. So the full number of new houses, the new full number of new pieces, and in some areas, I think we've, we've fallen short on that. And I think if you think of it that way, in, in the Sequoia context, then you do necessarily follow on with a project-specific analysis. And to me, right from the start, that's why this project being the rules confuses me. So I, I, I think, to my way of thinking, the more it can be characterized that the project are rules and regulations, the less it's likely to have this presidential effect that people are talking about. I, I am sensitive to the woman from the Parks Department. There are just a few kinds of impacts that if we build this out, all the housing element out completely and bring in that new number of people, I don't think have been identified as fulsomely as others. And I think the tennis courts and the pickleball courts and the ball fields are a good example of that. And other areas, it has been done as if it's all built out, but I don't think it's been done across the board. I don't know if that's helpful, but in, in my mind, that reinforces the thought process that I introduced an hour or so ago.
Well, I mean, I think it's helpful, in as much as if we wanted to make it one express that the document isn't meant to serve as a basis for a subsequent sequel document, I think that that's helpful. One of the things that was also noted that we would, of course, there may be other housing laws that come along that would, for example, state if you are if you're in, if your project is compliance with the zoning and the housing element, then you are, and of course necessarily the GP, then you would be exempt from some aspect of, of Sequoia perhaps all. And so it is it, it's also not correct, or it may be not as fully stated that with the adoption of the housing element based on this MND, that there very likely will be exemptions, or frankly, exceptions from Sequoia that will, that would apply. Just as, as a note, but Linda, to your point, I think that if we want to be clear what the document is or is not, we could, we could include some express language in it, and that might be helpful.
I'd certainly support that.
Nicholas, do you have any other kind of general thoughts about where you are on the ISMND and?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that there are questions regarding aesthetics and thinking particularly with respect to Dorothy Ford Park. I think that there are issues pertaining to to consistency with other policies that are called out in the GP, and we've been through that. And I've reviewed staff's memorandum on that point, and I've put together a colleague's memo, which, you know, I mean, and that may not circulate. But I think that there are some real challenges there. Again, I'm unclear on the consistency of the use of population numbers for various elements within the MND, and I'll make a appointment to come in and actually slog through that together with the planning director, if that's acceptable to her. If somebody wants to come and join me from that, from the commission, that, you know, would be, would be great, more than one person, we'd end up with a Brown Act issue. And I've already referenced the issue of issues of pertaining to, pertaining to fire. So that's what I've got.
Great, thanks. Let me go to the new people. How about you, Ronnie? Do you want to discuss where your thinking is?
Yeah, I, I think the MND is, is a very well researched and comprehensive document. From what I've seen, and the comments from residents were very impressive. And then I think the response to comments was very helpful, especially the, the master comments. And I guess for me, in terms of thinking about recommending the, this to the town council to accept the, the aesthetic impact is one of the things I think about the most. And, you know, I think it just seems to be especially subjective and qualitative. And, you know, I think many people in town would feel that there is a significant impact, for example, to the Alpine Corridor and maybe from Dorothy Ford Park and the upzoning there. And so I, I mean, yeah, so we have that on the one hand. On the other hand, I, I appreciate the what's made clear that, you know, we kind of have a self-mitigating aspect with the provisions that we do have in the general plan and in the housing element itself. And so, I don't know, I think you get to a point where there's some impact, but there are some mitigations, and it's sort of a judgment. Does it rise to the level of significance? And I guess that's what I've been thinking about the most. Yeah, I think that's all for now.
Great. Thank you. Linda, your turn.
First, I just have a question. Laura, did I understand you to say that you put the Moritz map in the safety element, but not in the housing element? And if I understood that correctly, why would you put it in one place and not in both?
You did hear me correctly. The Moritz map is in the safety element, but it's not in the housing element. We have mapped for the planning commission, we put out the memo that includes the Moritz map with the housing element sites. And we have the table that describes those sites and their designation in, on the Moritz map in terms of their fire danger based on vegetation. And it had to do with how the housing element committee was working at the time. And, you know, how we were looking at the constraints at the time. But there were certainly members of the committee that were interested in continuing to discuss the Moritz map. But it didn't get as much attention from the full ad hoc housing element committee. So the Moritz map could be included in the housing element. And if the planning commission made such a recommendation, then we would forward that onto the council for consideration.
I, actually, I, I think that would be a good thing to do. I, I like consistency. I don't like inconsistency. And having it in one place and not the other seems to me kind of a red flag. I guess my other comments, I've, I've made my primary comment again, and I'm not going to beat that horse again, about the program MND, to me, makes a whole lot more sense and solves a lot of problems. In many ways, you've solved the problem of subsequent EIRs or subsequent sequel review by putting it in 100 times. But to me, more emphasis on the real program nature of this document is important. I have two other things that I, I share Ronnie's and some of the other perspective and some of the comments, including comment letters that I wrote. I just am not overly comfortable. I guess I could almost say I'm uncomfortable with some of the findings of significance. I know over the years that there's 100 ways to do that, or there's as many ways to find significance as there are people in the world. But, or people reviewing your document. I just felt like, if you think about potential build-out of all of the housings that we're covering here, there are just some impacts. I, I mentioned the parks before. I'm sympathetic to the aesthetics as well. The sheriff, I think, I one time lived in a neighborhood that was supposedly the most dangerous neighborhood in town, based on the number of police calls. Well, it turns out that rock and roll band Heart lived two blocks away. And I just had so many overdoses and so many fights that my otherwise nice neighborhood had more, more police incidents than anywhere else. My point being, I can't believe we'd add 10% to the population and not need a little more police help, which is why I want to talk to the sheriff. I guess my final comment are two things that I, I, I'm on overload here, but I don't think we have much of an administrative, much reference in our administrative record to two things that, that are troubling to me. One is the whole builder's remedy. I don't know how you correlate that per the earlier discussion to baseline. I think baseline is clear. Baseline is what we have right now. Builder's remedy might impact our cumulative effect analysis, it might affect some of the other analysis. And, and I don't, I just don't see anything on it. And I know it's evolving, and I know I'm coming in today. And I wasn't here a year ago, or a year and a half ago when you started all of this, but that bothers me. I don't have a solution. I'll just say that it bothers me. And by the same token, and this is something I didn't spend a lot of time on, because again, it's just kind of at the edge of my experience level right now. But I don't see a lot on the, the opportunities associated with this bonus density work. Maybe I missed it. But those seem to me to be two topics. We ought to have something on our administrative record to support our findings. I don't know that they need to be actually in the document, but maybe. but maybe they need to be in appendix or something like that. So I would offer that. And that's it. Otherwise, like I said at the outset, I think you've done a good job with an awful lot of, awful, you've done a lot of work.
Great. Thanks, Linda. Let's see, from me, yeah, I definitely like these responses in the way the staff and experts collated them into a master response. And it definitely helped to see some of the case law, because as many of us have talked, the words aren't just the casual, normal English word. Sometimes it, they have specific meaning. So it was good to see that. And I liked the way it was organized. Um, you know, on fire, we're also fire attentive and I, as well as Nicholas, we're on the housing element committee. You know, we were just super attentive to fire sites. And in my mind, we chose sites based on both maps, you know, it didn't matter which map you used. These are the sites we pick. And I've posed to many people, what's a better set of 253 sites? That's more fire sensitive. And I don't, I haven't gotten a response on that. Nobody has anything better. And I do want to make sure everybody realizes or sees page, read page 67 in our packet. It's an email from the fire marshal that has looked at the sites in the housing element and deems that they're all moderate, or, you know, once they get built out. I mean, it'll be great to have him come, but I'll be surprised if he doesn't say what's in that email on page, read page 67. Um, I'd like to talk a bit about pickleball, because I play a lot of pickleball. And I've heard that brought up as something that may be a problem in the ISMND. My first thing is, you know, what I really want to keep about my town is auto mechanics, grocery stores, physical therapists, public school. Those places can only exist if they have employees. And those employees need to get to work. They have, you know, they can't phone it in kind of jobs. The building housing helps that part of my town. That's important to me. And I feel like, you know, if, if me and my friends get inconvenienced in pickleball and can't play quite as much as we want, you know, that's a good trade off. We, people just that we rely on just can't be driving and driving and driving so many hours and from so far away when the Bay Area doesn't have enough housing. Um, second, I, oh, this is ironic. I was talking to my two new colleagues and I was enthusiastically inviting Linda to come play pickleball. I invite a lot of people that play pickleball because it's so much fun. Now I hear, oh, people are saying we might have a problem with ISMND because of pickleball. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I gotta stop inviting people. Nobody come. Of course, I'm not going to do that, though. Everybody, Linda and everybody else is definitely invited. And I just want to, I did look up the numbers, the last two years in the Portola Valley Pickleball Group, like the email list, went up by 80%, 80 and 89% the last two years. This increase in housing is 20% increase over eight years. So that's a little under like 2 and 1/2% per year, where we're already growing pickleball at 80% a year. I just really think we got to find a way to incorporate the new people. And, you know, there are mitigate, I mean, the town, we could build new courts. That's got issues too. But I really think we have to be creative in figuring out how to accommodate new things. And the other thing, reason I can't go for this, and maybe this is just too kind of global or high level. But if you're looking at the housing problems from the state and then towns that are going to have their pickleball courts impacted, say, oh, you know, we can't build housing because our pickleball courts are getting full. You know, it leads you to put, well, we could put all the housing in East Palo Alto. They have no pickleball courts, so they can't have this problem. But that's not right. You know, we got to just, we got to mitigate that part. Let's see, on to aesthetics. I know people are, it is scary to all of us to think of new housing and what's it going to look like. And of course, if you imagine a Soviet style, you know, huge wall close to the road, painted bright pink, ton of light, that seems awful. But I do have confidence in our design guidelines. You know, first of all, there's a 75 foot corridor. So the plan is, you know, buildings back from that. I'm confident it's going to be gray or green, or, excuse me, um, you know, drab colors. It will have no lights fill. It's going to have native plants out by the cars. So that it is going to fit in with the Portola Valley aesthetic. It's not going to be like something that we just can't live with. I did hear somebody bring up that we have, I think they're talking about the Ford site, Ford Park site, that it's not a good site, that we're putting people on the bad side of the railroad tracks. But I vehemently disagree with that. I've told my friends about the housing element and all the work we did and how we came up with sites and finally came up with this Ford Park site was a key to getting it to all work and how nice it is. It's by a creek. You're, you could walk to coffee. You could walk to some restaurants. Many people I tell that their first response is, oh, what's the income level? I'd love to live there. I think it's a good site. And I did hear questions about the sheriff and I'd love to kind of know those numbers. But that to me definitely seems like something we could mitigate. If we got a contract with the sheriff for 10% more, more attention or work, yeah, wouldn't we just do that? That doesn't seem like it should be anything more than, yeah, the population grew. We, we got more services. So I'm inclined to think that the ISMND does cover all the big bases that we needed to cover. Yeah, that's it for me.
Can I interject? A word of advice for Linda? Linda, if you go to play pickleball with Ann, don't play for money.
That's how I feel about cards, too.
I guess now that we've all spoken, it's kind of nice, I mean, make some more of a discussion if anybody wants to say anything else or bring up any other points that, again, because I'd like to keep the discussion part short in the next meeting, just because we're going to have other big topics to discuss before we send it on with approval or not approval to the town council.
And I have a question of whether or not any of this discussion will be incorporated in the document. I don't know the next step, Ms. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm new to this too, or this part of the procedure. So, yeah, could Laura or somebody else tell us what the, what or how much of these comments will get included?
We would really be looking to the planning commission to let us know, for example, if there's a response or a topic area that you don't feel is sufficient, that you would want us to add additional detail, we would be looking for your specific feedback or direction on that. And I think it, it may be well covered already, but I don't know where the other planning commissioners are other than the chair. Our consultant team could respond to the question of parks and recreation and how we reached our conclusion, if you would like to hear that.
I'll defer to my fellow commissioners. I don't think I need to hear it since I didn't think we should count it as an impact, but.
I think, I think, one, I think it's strange to include that in discussion just as a kind of a process matter. I'm not sure how much I care, but we have everybody assembled, so it seems, seems okay. But the broader issue is, from my perspective, this isn't about pickleball. And it's about trade offs and to exposing and ventilating the trade offs and what the actual impacts are going to be. And some of those, maybe we're going to take longer to get a court. But that's to trivialize the matter. It also means that we're going to have 10% more people on an evacuation route. And that is something that is a surreal moment. It's 10% more people looking for services, like where's the sheriff? And it's not a matter of affordable housing. It's a matter of pure numbers. It's a matter of putting another, or I guess if we're increasing by about 15% of the population, maybe a little bit more. So it's bad when you have a lawyer doing math, particularly, but, you know, it's what, another 600, 800 people? And that's a, that's a big change. Not in terms of absolute numbers, but in terms of the context of our town and what it will mean to the look, to the feel, to the availability of, of services and what the town perhaps needs to do through additional mitigation. Self mitigation is, you know, is a term that I've always been very uncomfortable with. And, you know, the courts have been uncomfortable with self mitigation. The Lotus case, for example, is a case that expressly addresses self mitigation and disfavorably. So we need to look at what the impacts actually are, based on what the numbers are, and to recognize that things are going to change. And if we want things to have the same look and feel, we need to actually understand what those are going to be. And, and I think that's a numbers issue, which is the reason why I keep on coming back to the question of consistency of numbers. Do we have our numbers right? How do the numbers play through for issues of, of, of services? Whether it's fire, police, school, evacuation, fill in the blank, and pickleball? You know, all of those things are important, but I'm not sure that it's a parks and recreation question. I think it is a cross cutting kind of issue that we're dealing with. So, I mean, I'm happy to talk about parks and rec, but I think that it's a, I think it's a broader issue than that.
So, so I think I both agree and disagree with Nicholas on that. I agree that it's about a total numbers question. Maybe the part where, well, maybe I don't disagree with them, but I look at it as a, we get to deal with that, right? It's not going to change whether or not we do our arena numbers. We're, we're getting the arena numbers. It's like, you know, most of the services, people say, oh, well, we don't have good phone service or we don't have good sewer service. How could we add anymore? Well, the answer is, we're required to deliver that as a town. You know, as a town, we're required, you know, we choose to provide recreational services and we fit that in with our budget and our population. I don't see that as an impediment to moving forward. I agree, but I totally agree with you. Yes, we have to call it a 15% or 20% over the next eight or 10 years. And yeah, we should be planning for that as a town. I suspect it will happen along the way, but, but that's kind of why, I don't look at it as a reason to hold anything up.
I, I'm fully on board with you that it kind of, in a certain sense, it is what it is. But what SECL says is you have to understand what it is. You have to understand what that incremental difference means. And you have to either mitigate it or find that it's not an impact. Or if it is an unmitig, I hate to say, if it can't be mitigated, then you've got to go and do a different kind of document than what we're doing here. And, but I agree with you completely. And our numbers are what our numbers are going to be, but we have to understand what it means for pickleball. And we have to understand what it means for safety and evacuation, all those things. And then we have to create a process that can mitigate it to the extent that's feasible and, and move forward. And it may be that we think that some of these things are kind of on the bubble. And that we say, geez, we're an appointed board. Isn't it nice that we have elected officials that will get to go and sort it out? But in the first instance, we have to think about what that increment means. And then we give it to the, the council.
And I agree with all that. Of course, we got to look at the total numbers and the town needs to plan for the services. I guess the question for all of us is, does this document adequately highlight the areas that need, you know, attention if we're going to add 253 new housing units? Or do you have specific areas you would like, you think the public and all of us need to have additional information pointed out to us?
From my perspective, I didn't understand that the numbers were consistent through the document. And so is therefore difficult for me to assess how, what the impacts actually were. I saw the response to the question and frankly, did not understand. I, I understood each word, but I did not understand the totality of, of those words. And I, and I don't mean to be facetious. I truly, I, 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 I didn't, I didn't understand it. So when you ask me, so do you, what, what do you think? And the answer is, I kind of don't know what I think. I know that there are trade offs that are being made and that's reflected in the consistency of policies. I believe that there will be impacts based upon the changes in numbers, but I don't know what those numbers actually are. And I'm looking forward to spending some time with the planning director, potentially others, to, to really sort that out. So that's, that's where I am. I'm one person.
I'm sorry, Nicholas. I didn't understand. Why, why are the numbers not clear? The 253 is real clear, right? You're just saying we don't know exactly how many residents that translates to, whether it's 500 or 700.
700 and then, or, yeah, exactly. I mean, we, we know what the, we know what the number of units are, but we're not, we're, we're looking in terms of impacts. We have to look at the number of people. I'm not saying that we're going to make any judgment about the number of units that are being built. That was served up to us on the basis of the calculation that, 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 that others have, have made. But if you need to figure out, how long are you going to be at the pickleball court? It's not a number. It's not a question of how many units, but it's a question of how many people. If you're trying to figure out how long it's going to take you to get out of town in the event of a fire, that's largely a people kind of.
Right, but don't, we, we, I agree, we, it's, but can't we just make an educated guess? And let me just ask, Laura, do we have a kind of a working, working model of the number of people?
736, page, read page 68.
Depends on what page you're looking at.
Why isn't that good enough?
Because it says different numbers on different pages.
And how different are they, though? I mean, your analysis isn't going to be different if it's 736 versus 682, is it?
I think the point to me is that a lot of these particular impacts, whether it's 10% or 15%, maybe your question is right, Ann, but in a lot of these instances, the, the mitigated make deck calls it an insignificant impact. And I don't know if I, when I used to work, if I got a 10% I don't know if I, when I used to work, if I got a ten percent raise, I'm not sure whether that was significant or insignificant, but, but to me. It sort of makes it sound like we can absorb that and we are all sitting here saying, we know the town will then have to deal with these effects. I will say, and it might not help anybody, but I think of these from the perspective of if I, if I was representing. An industrial company or something, we were bringing a project into town. The town would ask us to pay for the expansion at the park. Or all of the other kind of impacts and basically you're right, we have no choice, we've got this number of houses. But I just don't want to underplay or undersell the impacts. To our successors as they have to deal with these projects. And that was why I use the pickleball somewhat as a joke, but somewhat as an example. Also the sheriff as an example, it's just when there's a ten percent increase and twelve percent, whatever it is. In our population, the services are going to have to go up. And right now, this document in a lot of instances calls those insignificant impacts, that was the point I was trying to make.
And I would agree, and further to your point, uh, and. I don't know if ten versus fifteen versus twenty percent makes a difference. But this may be some sensitivity testing that should be done. Or at a, at a, or at a minimum, we ought to be consistent within the document. And we pick a number, you know, in a, in a certain, at a certain level. And you know, stay with it, but I, I really, I authentically. Don't know what the right number is. And it appeared to me to be changing through the document and I, I didn't understand the. You know, the two line, uh, response to my question on that. So you're saying, so what do I think? I'm thinking that I'd like to understand. Whether the numbers are in fact consistent, if they are, they should be made consistent. If we think there's variability, we should have a statement that says. That there may be variability, but we think that this is the reasonably foreseeable. Uh, population increase and we're going to go with it. It doesn't need to be the maximum, but there needs to be a consistent story.
Okay, okay, I'm, um, I, I really think we're getting wrapped around the axle on, um, these details. Can we just pick a number, seven hundred, ask staff to make the document consistent? We do our analysis on a, a high number, seven hundred. Uh, if it turns out to be lower than that, we can hire fewer sheriffs, we can build fewer pickleball courts. But we've at least wrapped our brain around what the kind of worst case is. I think that, or and then I'd love to ask you your opinion, like, let's say the number seven hundred. Then what's your opinion about the ISM and D is, are there things that need to be additionally addressed?
I think if the, if we call the number seven hundred, and I have no idea whether that's appropriate or not. But we need to run the analysis and we need to understand. Whether the, now to Linda's point, whether there is a significant impact based on that. Uh, uh, conservative number. And if there are, we may need to have some, uh, additional mitigation. And that's, you know, it's. And that's the question. The one, another aspect of it is. Uh, one of, uh, I mean, we, whether we call it aesthetics or consistency with policy. And that is a, uh. You know, that, that's a question of some judgment, and I think that we've heard some different views on it.
Yeah.
Could I try to, to, could I try to elaborate a little bit and then Curtis, if you could join me on this, um? Answer if I falter, but as we were working through this analysis, there are certain models. And sources of data that we have to use for different parts. Um, and so for example, when we were working on the transportation, the V M T analysis. We have certain boundaries of certain areas that are the transportation zones. And the data is based on that area. And we have to use certain assumptions and certain models consistent with what our county uses. Um, to run these models, and so the border of that area may not line up exactly. Um, to other borders or other lines that we have to use for different type of analysis. So we have to use certain inputs into the model for our transportation analysis. And then our V M T analysis has to be aligned with our greenhouse gas analysis, for example. And we've done our best to make adjustments for that as we model and analyze the different topic areas. But the number of projected residents that we found is the one. That Commissioner Goulden mentioned that we state. But if there is an appearance of inconsistency, it's because we're analyzing different sections using different tools. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I understand again what you're saying. Uh, uh, I. At a minimum, we need to explain that in the document, and I think I'd probably want to give some thought. To using inconsistent numbers. Within. Uh, the same document describing, uh, the same geographic area. Does that make sense?
Logically, it absolutely makes sense, um, and normally we would look for. You know, as a planner, I'm trained to look for consistency because I came up reviewing plans and looking for consistency between all of the things. Um, there has to be some judgment by our professionals in this case. What is the best data, the best models, the best maps and the best assumptions? That approximate what we are trying to study in town. We don't have all of those models and data and plans that are specific always to the lines where we want to draw them. So, um, we are, we have to use the data in the models that are included in the best practice and what's available to us.
And I, I, I am fine with that Laura, because you know, you guys, we, we just can't get perfect numbers, we were using. Twenty percent increase in houses and that's going to affect the pickleball or the sheriff, but. You know, it's, it, we're never going to know the exact number, if the people, especially the ones that live in the low income, lower income housing. Are working people, they're going to play less than the people that are retired in the rest of town, right, we can't just scale it. I, we'll never get perfect answers, I think this is good enough and we have to, the professionals use their judgment. And then we have to just look at it as commissioners and use our judgment. We would not want the numbers to be especially low, that would be a mistake. It's, you know, you make your life harder if you make the numbers too high, but I think we have to just use approximate numbers. And, uh, make our judgments about whether the ISM and D is. Has enough information for the public and to send and for the town council.
I think in general, in, sorry, just on that. In general, I look at anything on ten to fifteen percent as something we should be able to handle. So if we want to put it in a general comment saying we expect all services to roughly increase by ten or fifteen percent over eight years. And we should plan for that. To me, that's sufficient, um, you know, I don't need to get to the pickleball. To use that example again, level of detail, right, it's like, no, we can, we can manage that, we have. We're capable of managing that, um. So that's kind of where I go with, I think we're pretty good here, you know, well. If, if we want to check with the sheriff, fine, um, but I'm pretty sure there's not going to be. I, maybe I'd be wrong, so we'd go, go check with them anyway, but I'm pretty sure that we like, fine. You know, there's going to be, they're going to be handling the growth across the entire Bay Area. Of these kinds of numbers, so I'm pretty sure they're going to be working that into their plans.
Okay, good, let's, um, wrap this up, I think, uh, anything else on? Discussion before we go to our next agenda items?
And I, um, I actually wanted to ask Commissioner Targ, um. Maybe clarify a little bit about what issues you have with the, um. Self mitigating aspect, I, I mean, I guess I just read that as. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be impacts, but you know, we have our general plan and other, uh, regulations that. Are going to kind of bound what the impacts will actually be and that, I mean, that's, that's the mitigation. Uh, that, that takes effect, um, and so I guess I didn't quite understand what, why you think that, why, why you don't like that term or something like that.
The, it's important, I appreciate your question, thank you. As a informational document, it's important to understand what the impacts are. And then one can say that they are mitigated in the following ways. And then one can say, because of the following things that we are doing. Uh, it is, uh, uh, it is less than significant, but is jumping a step. By saying it's less than significant. Rather than saying is less than significant, for example, with mitigation. And it's important to disaggregate it, so we actually know, uh. Know what it is that we're doing and that it's properly, uh, accounted for. That's my, that's my, uh, that's my issue. And also to make sure that if some of the mitigation that we're doing. Uh, to mitigate those impacts. Um, uh, may themselves have environmental effects. So it's not enough just to say that it's going to get taken care of because we're doing a host of things. But what are those things? How does it, uh, address the specific? Issue that were, that would need to be mitigated otherwise? And have we thought about what the, for example, the secondary effects might be? That's the, that's the reason why sort of self mitigation is, uh, uh. It, it is, is not, it's not so, not so favored.
Can't elaborate on that at all, but the, the, but the point of sequa is to lay these things out. Um, and they may be common sense to us. But on the other hand, if a document's abs- if, if certain elements like this are absent from a document, like John's comment about the population. I think that's a good way to handle it. Address the inconsistency, say there's reasons for the inconsistency, it's just a matter of putting it down on paper. And showing that there's a record that we thought that through. I mean, you got to think of it in terms of, you know, the deer jumped in front of the car, I mean, we're, if, if you're looking back at this five years from now. Uh, or if we're looking back at this, God forbid, with some sort of a challenge. Just want to show that you went through the thought process, and I know it seems that those of us have a bigger worldview, it sort of seems. Um, ridiculous, but I think I feel that way about the sheriffs and I feel that way about that ten percent change or ten for fifteen percent change in the population. I think John's idea is a good one, and I agree, I think in, in essence, a lot of what Nicholas is saying is, is along the same lines. Let's put the words down there and make sure it's clear that we've thought this through, I mean, that's why I felt. Like the fire map should be the same in both places, it's just, uh, unless you're going to do it, if you're going to do it differently, you've got to explain why you did it differently. And that's, that's for better or for worse, that's a critical part of, of sequa and a part of sequa where people frequently get hung up and. Uh, I know the staff knows that perfectly well, um, when they're not, when it's not late at night with a gun at your head. But I think some of this conversation really has pointed out four or five areas where I think a few added sentences would be very helpful.
Great, thanks everyone, so Laura and, uh, uh, Karen, the technical staff, have we, um? Answered enough or, um? Given enough instructions?
Your discussion has been very helpful, um, this evening, it sounds like we need to have a, um, offline conversation for sure with Commissioner Targ. About those numbers and where he's identified them to make sure that, um, we can explain that. Because, um, if the answer we provided isn't sufficient, um, we'll, we'll put that, um, into the record one way or another. So thank you for all of that discussion.
Great, no, thanks for all your work and, uh, thank you all, um, consultants that joined us, appreciate it. Um, okay, I'll close out this, um, topic on the ISM and D and we'll go to our next topic, which is, um. Commission, commissioners' reports and staff reports. Uh, do any commissioners have any meetings or reports they'd like to make? Hearing none, uh, how about staff reports?
Only, only, only that, uh, we've had just an amazing amount of water fall on us. And amazing number of trees come down. And the public work staff has just rocked it. Uh, over these last, uh, couple, three weeks. Uh, and, uh, it's not a, it's not a, I guess, a meeting, but is it? Uh, is a thank you. And, uh. Keep it up.
Great, thanks, um, Laura, any staff reports?
Um, no, we're going to continue to provide some support and additional information for our new commissioners. Um, to help bring them up to speed, um, so we'll be working on that. And then, um, we'll be going into, not immediately, but we'll have a rotation of the chair also coming up. Um, so you can expect to see that on an upcoming agenda.
Good by me. Um, okay, and I should take, um, public comments on, even though we didn't have very much substantive in those sections, is that right?
Um, yes, we should, we have the three hands up, we have no members of the public left in the room.
Okay, good, and there are fourteen attendees. Um, okay, so you all, we take, these are comments not for the ISM and D, we've moved on. It's time for comments on the commission reports, which was a thank you and, uh, Laura's staff report. I'll call on Christie Corley.
Here's Christie.
Sorry, I think that was up from before, thank you.
Okay, no worries. Um, Jay White.
Sorry, I, I didn't realize it was, uh, for the staff report, but, um. I think as a developer here, and given the inconsistency in how people are thinking about. Development here, uh, I, I think we'll ultimately request that we do not. Change any zoning for, uh, the Alpine four, three, nine, four, uh, property, thank you.
Okay. Um, uh, let me move to Rita Gomez.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Targ's comment about, um. You know, the trees down and, and people doing the extra work. And I live on West Ridge and there were several trees that were down that blocked the roads, the, and I think that the evacuation. Um, you know, the evacuation plan in this document and in all the documents that we have. Really need to be relooked at, uh, there was several brand new streams. And, uh, and, and just lots of trees down that block routes and, and I don't see that being factored into. Um, you know, the plans that we currently have, and thank you.
Thanks Rita. Okay, I'll close out the commission staff and committee reports, uh, we'll go to approval of minutes. Um, we have the November thirtieth and December seventh meetings. Um, you know, we have two new commissioners. It's a widely held misconception that people cannot vote on minutes that weren't present, that's actually not true, they can. But I talked to them and they can either abstain or vote for them, uh, this time. But I talked to them, and they can either abstain or vote for them this time. Either is acceptable. Let's start with November thirtieth. Do any commissioners have corrections they'd like to make?
I have no corrections.
Anybody else? Assume nobody else. So I do have one on page four eighty-four, red page forty-four, oops, sorry, I'm sometimes hard to get to where you want to in these big documents. Oh, shoot. Just a sec. Down at the like the third to last paragraph where it starts with my name, says agreed with Vice Golden. The council is checked with before the, and then it just says MMM. I didn't know what that meant, and I even went and listened to the Zoom. I thought the timestamp is clear just after that. But I, I couldn't find it. Maybe I didn't listen to enough, but I didn't know what that MMM was. So no other corrections? Shall we have a motion to, for these minutes with that change?
I would move that we approve the minutes with the noted change.
And I would second that.
Great. But we, do I take public comments now?
We need to, yes.
Maybe we could jump to, could we do December seventh meeting minutes and then take public comments on both at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Let's do that. Let's go to December seventh. Does anybody have changes they'd like to make?
No changes for me.
No changes.
Okay. Let me open it up to public comments. This is on the minutes, both November thirtieth and December seventh, taken together. Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the more thorough minutes that are being reflected tonight. For them to be so old when we have so many issues going on in town is 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 a bit of a disappointment since there has been a meeting, it's overlapping meetings. And and, you know, not all of the public has time to watch the long videos or sit through the whole meeting, and so it's hard for people to get the information. But at least if they're waiting, these minutes are are more reflective of what actually happened during those meetings. And I'm sure that they will help the new commissioners moving forward. And it's unfortunate for them that the old minutes are going to be so short and and not as clear when so much is going on in our town. Thank you.
Welcome. Christie Corley.
Thank you. Red page, oh, November thirtieth, red page four seventy-three. My comments on the ISM and D, page seventeen, I listed everything that was checked and everything that was not checked. So it's not, and I would like that reflected in this paragraph. And I remember reading each one. So I want the public to learn about this process, and if we're not detailed enough, they may not learn that some things were not checked and some things were checked. And therefore, some things are in the MNIS or ISM and D, and some things are not due to the check boxes. So I would like that more listed, and if someone needs to listen to the tape, I think it's there. Thank you.
Through the chair, could I just make two comments on that? First one in regards to the minutes being older. The November thirtieth and December seventh meeting were only one week apart. It takes these long planning commission meetings, when you want them in this level of detail, it takes, our transcriptionist between twelve and fourteen hours to write these minutes. So it's impossible to generate minutes in less than a week. They they would have to stay up all night to make the packet deadline. And then in regards to the details from the members of the public, the planning commission may recall, this is one of the reasons that the council moved from summary minutes to action minutes. So from the detailed ones down to the kind of bare bones ones is because we were having issues with members of the public asking for all of their comments to be corrected. And there was a feeling that that wasn't potentially the best use of time. I'm not giving any opinion on that. I'm just reminding the planning commission of that past discussion. And the planning commission has in the past suggested to me that as long as we've captured the gist of the comments from members of the public, that that's sufficient.
Yeah, I, boy, I'm, I'm big on capturing the gist of it and not having changes that are not, you know, if something's flat-out wrong or just the transcriptionist really did not understand something. But just edits in it do seem too too laborious.
So I would move that we adopt the December seventh minutes as as they are.
I'll second that. Okay, can we have a vote on each of the minutes?
So for November thirtieth, we have a motion and second, John Golden, Nicholas Targ, and December seventh, John Golden and Coff Sil. I can do it one vote, can't I? Okay, so one roll call vote. So commissioners that are new, we do roll call votes for these official actions. So I call out each of your name and you just say yes or no. So that's just what we do for procedure-wise. So Commissioner Brothers. Commissioner Targ.
You're muted, Nicholas.
Commissioner Krasinski.
I abstain.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Goulden.
Aye.
Chair Coff Sil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, Laura, I also, to echo Rita's comments, I really appreciate these minutes. I can tell that they take a very long time for the professional to listen to our meetings and write this up, but it is good to have them. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, and thanks to Linda and Ronnie for being such good participants on your very first meeting with a big dense topic. And thank you to Laura and Cara, and probably all the experts are gone, but really appreciate it. And to the public. Oh, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I see Craig Taylor there. Did you want to say something?
Just congratulations to the new members and congratulations on ending your meeting roughly at eleven o'clock. That's
I know, that is our goal.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.